We are live.
All right. Welcome everyone. We're continuing our meeting here. We can be in open session, a closed session announcement, and an open session by our city attorney, Quinn Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council went into closed session to have a conference with its labor negotiators pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council gave direction to its labor negotiators. There was no other reportable action taken.
Perfect. With that, folks, that meeting is adjourned. And with it, welcome to the city council regular meeting for Tuesday, September 19, 2023. With that, we call the meeting to order and a pledge of the flag led by our very own Abigail Shoppie. Abigail, come up here and join me, please.
Henry.
Following your instructions.
Right hand of your heart, please stand ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Abigail. Was there anybody here in the audience that came with you? Want to point them out, tell us who they are?
My grandpa.
He's here, over there. How about anybody watching you at home?
My grandma.
Am friends and family watching you too?
No.
All right. So, hold on. So, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin is going to give you a city pen for "Welcome is Here." And we're going to... Her fifth grade at Meadows Elementary School. Who's your favorite principal?
Miss Christmas.
Good answer, great answer. On behalf of the city council, this recognizes you, Abigail Shoppie, for leading the city council and the community in the pledge allegiance dated the 19th day of September 2023. Congratulations. And we're going to all come and join you for a picture and look towards grandpa over there in the center for a pic. All right, you ready?
Hi.
You did a great job.
Works good. Thank you. One, two, three. Got it.
One more. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the way.
Here's the official one.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
We'll see if you correct. Yes.
Still didn't follow.
All right. All right, folks, that's the highlight of our meeting. We're going to move right to the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading ordinances, council.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, can I do roll call?
Oh, sorry, we skipped ahead.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Haworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
I'm here as well. Thank you. Now, we're all caught up. Item A, approval of agenda and a waiver of full reading ordinances. Anyone going to pull any items? This is the place to do it. I'm not changing the order, this is where. I have a motion by Councilwoman Haworth. And a second by Councilwoman Lesser. Voting screen, please.
Uh-oh. What's with my Zoom?
Zoom went out.
Join meeting?
Oh.
Motion?
Let me do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Oh, yes?
Present, yes.
No, on the agenda item, we have to do a roll voice vote.
She just did. And then again, you did a voice vote again?
This is for the consent calendar.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here, present.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Here, present, yes.
It's a roll call or a vote?
It's a vote.
Vote on the agenda.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Yes, again.
Councilmember Lesser?
Yes, again.
Councilmember Haworth?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
There we go. That's the key we're waiting for, folks. All right. Item F is our city council community organization announcements about coming events. One minute per person. So, anyone here has a one-minute comment on the community, please. This is the time to let us all know about it.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the teens and tweens of the community to learn origami on Tuesday, October 3rd at 4:00 p.m. Join us for a special origami workshop and art display unveiling in our teen space, where we will discuss the display's book-inspired theme and learn how to create an origami crane. And this program is particularly interesting because a group of local teens will be putting on their debut library program, and we're really excited for that. Also, join us on Monday, October 16th at 6:00 p.m. for a very special author talk with Henry Winkler, Dan Santat, Lynn Oliver, as they launch their first book in the new early-grade book series Detective Duck. At this free event, the authors will be available for a meet-and-greet, book signing, and will share some of their experiences as renowned authors. And this event is in partnership with Page's Bookstore and is appropriate for children of all ages, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Good to see you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. I'm Karen Wildridge. I'm one of the co-founders from Stanford Peace, and my partner Donna Barney Nicholson is one of the teachers at Penny Camp. You heard me last time, two weeks. I promise I'll go super fast now I have a timer. But I did want to let you know that the kids at, all the students at the Miracosta, all the way down to preschool, have been having Teach Peace Week. So, tomorrow morning, I'll actually be at Meadows for their Peace Day program. So, I'll be seeing our student there. Also, two days from now is official Peace Day, U.N. International Peace Day. It's been proclaimed by the city of Manhattan Beach to be official Day of Peace, and we have a community program planned for you. So, we have our superintendent for Dr. Bose will be there. Dr. Gerger will be there from Miracosta. Hillary Mahan from the Manhattan Beach Education Foundation. Tina from our school board, Chef Puri. Kate Crelin will actually be bringing some choir members from Miracosta to sing, as well as we have a soloist, Samantha Probes. We have... Oh, shit. Oh, shoot.
And our own police chief, right?
I was going to say, she was, unfortunately, she just had to make a change. So, Sergeant Abrou is going to be our community affairs.
Perfect.
And John Herschberg is our business person representative.
Could I ask a question about it?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Where and when?
Sorry, I started to, I thought I was going to run out of time. It's right here in the Civic Center at the Circle, and we're just setting up there. And we're actually going to create a human peace sign. At 5:30 to 6:15. On the 21st, yeah. So, there's a flyer floating around. All the school district and communities, including MB United, will be giving out signs and things like that, too.
Thank you, Karen. Well done.
All right, thank you.
Good job. Our next speaker, one-minute comments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and the public. My name's David Gibbons. I'm a police officer and a K-9 handler with the police department. Wanted to invite you all to our fifth annual downtown Manhattan Beach Car Show, which is happening on Sunday, October 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This event benefits the Manhattan Beach Police K-9 Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization that supports the current retired and future police dogs of Manhattan Beach. The car show is going to take place on Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Manhattan Avenue in the downtown area. Will feature over 200 cars of all types, everything from 1920s Ford Raptor, Mayor Pro Tem's Franklin's 55 Thunderbird will be there, 2023 Lamborghini is even signed up. So, it's a very fun, family fun event that we put on in partnership with the Downtown Business Association, and Skechers helps support putting it on. There'll be police and fire vehicles, raffle prizes. I think some of the downtown businesses will be doing a sidewalk sale, those kids face painting, balloon animals, scavenger hunt. And then, lastly, there's still time. If anybody else you know, friends, family, has cars, they can go to the website. It's mbpdk9.com/carshow, register their car, and then come down on October 1st.
Fantastic. Officer Gibbons, we'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be fun.
Can auction off your coat, car, Joe? Can auction off your T-bird?
That's really nice.
How about our next community announcements? Anyone else community-wise? I see Director Lehman's coming up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. And I am excited to invite the community out to the Polywog Park Playground Ribbon Cutting next Tuesday, September 26th at 10:00 a.m. And I did want to take a moment to thank the city council for their support and leadership on this project. It's a significant investment in our parks. It's an absolutely beautiful park. The design is spectacular. I also wanted to thank the Public Works Team Director Lee Katie Doherty for all of her team's work on this. They shepherded through all of the challenges and all of the water, and it turned out spectacular. So, please, I'd like to invite everyone out to see the new galleon and all the other park amenities again next Tuesday, the 26th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Look forward to it. Anyone else community announcement-wise? Anyone named for Beach City Health District, BCHD? No? Counsel, any comments? Community announcements? Anyone?
I actually have one, Your Honor. I've been reminded by a constituent that it is National Talk Like a Pirate Day. So, they dare me to toss out some pirate lingo like batting down the hatches and "Rr she blows" or scallywag, and for this, they are donating money to charity. So, all for a good cause. It is National Talk Like a Pirate.
You have to do it naturally at some point.
"Rr," I just did.
With that being said, I...
"Rr she blows." Sorry.
You want to log me in, too?
We're having the technical.
We're updating our high-end, high-tech equipment here, folks, so stand by for a minute.
This is not because I did that, "Talk Like a Pirate."
Mayor, can I make an announcement? Yes, Mayor Franklin has the floor.
I don't know if we've been remiss, but I just want a big shout-out to the city of El Segundo and their baseball, their Little League baseball team. I mean, they are world champions. I mean, it is just incredible. And I don't know if you all followed it. It had a lot of drama in it. They lost kind of early in the playoffs, and then they fought their way through the losers' bracket and then just had a boffo time out there. So, really want to sing their praises, want to thank them for keeping Little League alive. Anybody who's ever been involved with Little League, parents, kids, coaches, snack stand workers, everybody, you can really be proud of those guys from El Segundo. So, just wanted to mention that.
We're going to ask the mayor to deliver the certificate upstairs to the mayor of El Segundo. Congratulations.
And it's 55.
And two things, since our speaker from the Beach Cities didn't make it today, this is more of a serious item. It's Suicide Prevention Month. She sent me a note here, Suicide Prevention and Crisis Council resources. I wasn't aware of this either, but if you or someone you know is struggling with suicidal thoughts, seek help from a professional and call 988. The United States' first nationwide three-digit mental health crisis hotline. I didn't know that. 988. If you feel more comfortable than to text, then you text the word "home," H-O-M-E, to 741741, the United States and Canada. Thou'll reach the crisis text line. That's text "home," H-O-M-E, to 741741. If you want to speak to someone live, it's 988. So, I think Ally Stewart is going to make that announcement for us. It is National Suicide Prevention Month. Oh, there she is. I didn't see you sneak down here.
I apologize.
No, it's all right. You're good to go. Pretend you never heard a word I said.
All right. Thank you for doing that. Nice introduction. Good evening, Ally Stewart with Beach Cities Health District. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit more about Suicide Prevention Month. Recently, the Surgeon General issued a report talking about the dire circumstances that our young people are facing, especially coming out of COVID. And I'll read just some of the data to share with you related to certain mental health conditions, including depressive symptoms and suicidal ideation. The report stated that between 2009 to 2019, the proportion of high school students reporting persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness increased by 40%. Those seriously considering attempting suicide increased by 36%, and those creating a suicide plan increased by 44%. Between 2011 and 2015, youth psychiatric visits increased, and we're seeing that locally here, too. At Alco Beach Cities, which is a new youth drop-in center in Redondo Beach that all of Manhattan Beach is available to drop in and access free services, we're doing more risk assessment, safety planning for those experiencing suicidal ideation. So, I just wanted to come and share some resources. That's okay?
Go ahead and finish.
We know that behind all this data, there are families, there are communities impacted by suicide and what's left behind, and I know we're not immune to that here in Manhattan Beach. So, just the opportunity to stand up here and talk about this, to have a dialogue about it, to create community around asking for help. We talk a lot about prevention and how it's important. We're all trained in CPR to recognize the signs. If someone's having a heart attack, what you can do as a first responder on-site. We need to do the same for mental health. At Beach Cities Health District, we're doing a series of trainings on QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer, as well as Mental Health First Aid, so all of us can start to build capacity and community about how we address these things, not only for our young people, but for all ages. So, those trainings are free. They're available at Beach Cities throughout the fall. We're also doing the same for our young people to make sure that those trainings and resources are available to them. So, how can we bring QPR and that kind of training into the same level of awareness that we have with CPR, so we know the warning signs of suicide and how to talk about it, even though those conversations can be really difficult? The last thing I wanted to share, I did bring some resources that I've shared with the clerk to be entered into the record around suicide prevention, if I can leave those here with you. I think one of my favorites is this "You Matter" poster. I think the young person who created this, a former Miracosta graduate, presented to this council previously, really encouraging people to ask for help. I know it can be hard to do. It can be hard to initiate those difficult conversations with loved ones, family members, colleagues, just to check in and see if they're doing okay. So, I guess in closing, I would just encourage all of you to reach out to those around you and let them know it's okay to not be okay, but there are supports and resources out there available for them. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ally. Before you go, are you pushing out on the outreach of yours, whether it's the website or by mailing, about this 988 number and the text number?
Yeah, and so, in working with the county, and we attended a recent alternative crisis response countywide summit as they roll out 988, I know some city entities are opting to keep those calls local instead of routing into 988 as they build out the backend infrastructure for it. Didi Hirsch is the lead agency, kind of doing the triage on those calls with plans to eventually roll it out more countywide. And so, we're part of those conversations, and we'd love to partner with the city on that as we really look at other alternatives to crisis response, not only for mental health and suicide prevention, but for those experiencing homelessness as well.
Thank you for being here today. Short notice, too. I appreciate that.
And I'm sorry for the shortness of breath. Thank you.
It's all right. I was stalling until you got here.
Okay, thank you.
And one last one. Did you know what National Today is besides the Steve's? It's National Voter Registration Day. So, those of you, I know former Mayor Bob Holmes here knows that. To remind everyone, if you want to vote in next year's elections, to sign up, today's Voter Registration Day, and everyone gets to receive a notice in their mail. We'll continue on now to our...
We have some representatives from Miracosta High School. I'd like to speak.
Hi.
Hey, there.
So, we brought the Miracosta Happenings Report, and the last two weeks at Miracosta have been quite eventful. So, the student body enjoyed their first two home football games, where there were awesome performances by the dance and cheer teams. Unfortunately, the football team did not win, but they were very close. They put up good fights against some really two great teams. The freshmen are settling in as well, and we just had our freshman student government elections. So, our president was Brooke Jayden. Our vice president is Jonah Macon, and our secretary and treasurer was Ciara Stone, and that's of the class of 2027. The homecoming court was also announced, or was also elected, but it will be announced later this week.
Great.
This Thursday, 9/21/23, there'll be over 200 students trying to donate blood to the UCLA Blood Bank. Miracosta is the most successful UCLA school in Southern California last school year with almost 400 units drawn in total. This Friday, there will be a PTSA Community Tailgate fundraiser before the football game. And lastly, we are thrilled to announce that Miracosta High School once again ranks in the 2% best high school sports. This school guaranteed the honor in 2023 U.S. News World Report ranking system. Nationally, Miracosta has climbed 35 spots higher from last year's ranking.
That's good news. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. We'll see you next month. Anyone else here? How about on Zoom, Patty? No one else? All right, folks, we're going to move to public comments. Three minutes and person. Remember, if you speak on any item that's on our agenda, that's just one chance to talk on it. So, don't get two bites of the apple. With that, I see Candy Duncan here. Candy, the floor is yours. You have three minutes.
Well, I'll give you, I'll take two.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm Candy Duncan from Manhattan Beach Community Church. I'm on the extension board, and just recently, we were looking for some more things to do for outreach for the community, and the papers were going over and over again about the deaths of people from Sentinel. And when I heard about the couple that sent their daughter out with her boyfriend and her to go party with three people, and they died, all five of them, and that just broke my heart, and I thought we have to get the facts out to as many people as possible. So, on October 4th, we have four people from Torrance Memorial, a surgeon in the emergency room, a behavioral doctor, and some pharmacist, and we're going to have a panel from 7:00 to 9:00 on Peck Avenue, and we'd love to have your support. And actually, October is going to be fentanyl and drug awareness, and I'm hoping that this wonderful community will jump right in and support it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy. Appreciate that. And you have Ally's here, too, from... That makes Eva better. She can help.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and members of the public. I'm here this evening. I'm the facilitator for the upcoming teen-focused workshop entitled "Fentanyl Kills" that Candy Duncan just shed light on. I'm actually her son, Randy Duncan. We're here, we've coordinated this event, or I should say, my mom has coordinated this event with Torrance Memorial Medical Center. We've reached out to the principal and director of public relations at Miracosta High School. We're working in coordination with the Beach Cities Health District. We've communicated and coordinated with the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce, and we're working very furiously at getting the word out. It's posted on the, the event is posted on the student parent portal. It's called Peach Jar. So, all the parents at Miracosta High School and the students can see that this event is going to be on October 4th, Wednesday. It'll be held at Manhattan Beach Community Church, right adjacent to the Manhattan Beach Unified School District headquarters. And we've worked, we've reached out to them also to allow us to use their parking lot in the event we reach 300 persons in attendance. But this is a very, very serious matter. Fentanyl, as you know, or maybe you don't know, it's killing 200 people a day in the United States, most of them young people who are taking drugs that they think are going to maybe keep them up a little later and maybe allow them to have one more beer with their friends before they get sleepy. And instead, they often don't wake up. They may go to sleep, but they don't wake up, and it's just absolutely heartbreaking. Takes only a few granulars, not even the equivalent of pinches of salt, pressed into a pill that looks like whatever, I don't know what speed is, the legal term, because I'm not a, well, I'm not in that business. But these three or four granulars are pressed into pills, and our children that matter, yes, you matter. They each matter. They're taking these pills, and they're dying. And so, please, we encourage you, your neighbors, spread the word and have people come out. At 6:30 for refreshments and coffee, you'll meet our very qualified panelists, and they're going to shed considerable light on the dangers of fentanyl, so that we don't have anyone in our community lose their life and have parents that don't get to see their children grow up and get married and pursue their careers. So, it's really, really important. This isn't like having one too many beers. This is having one little pill that you think is something else, and it's killing people. So, we're excited about it. My mom, it was my mom's idea. The panel is excited about it. We hope the city council will embrace this, as will the community, and we'll see you at Manhattan Beach Community Church at 6:30 for refreshments on October 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate that. I'm glad Ally was here to hear that. Next speaker?
Really great they're doing that.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Pirate Napolitano. Can I get one more "arg"?
"Arr."
Okay.
That's all I got.
Well, you know, you made your friends happy. Regarding the 988 Suicide Prevention Hotline, I'd be remiss, that's not why I'm here, if I didn't give a shout-out to my wife, BJ, who through Didi Hirsch Foundation works the Suicide Prevention Hotline. Many times during my 12 years where you are now, somebody would come up here and they'd have a complaint about this or that, and you'd kind of grimace. You'd try to keep your happy face on, but it was tough. So, I'm here tonight with something really good. I had a situation a while back in which my water bill was excessively high. I thought, hmm. I figured I'd let it go for a month. I thought maybe the meter reader read it wrong and it sorted itself out. The next one was 10 times as high as my normal water bill. So, that certainly got my attention. I called our Public Works Director, Eric Lee, and said, hey, when you get a chance, could you, could you look into it, please? He came out that day with somebody, and they found that we had a broken pipe between the building and the meter. Now, the reason we weren't aware of it is because I live in the sand area, and that water's draining down, not coming up. So, I got my plumbers out. That was fine, but Mike Mastis, the utility manager, and Rick, the water supervisor, were so helpful, and it's just another one of those reasons that it's good to live in the city of Manhattan Beach. A very professional staff, a very responsive staff, and we residents are lucky. And then, like I say, I won't, I won't tell you what the water bill was. It was up there. Even in Manhattan Beach, it gets your attention. And then, I got unsolicited from Libby Bretthauer, the financial services manager. She reached out and indicated that on a one-time basis, or like once in a lifetime, you know, when things like this happen, you can get a break. And I wanted to come down and thank those four staff members in front of the council and in front of the city manager, because all too often, you get nothing but complaints. So, have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you, Mayor Holmes. Appreciate that. We always like good news. Our next speaker?
Is he buying at Shellback?
"Arr." My name's Charles Bragg. I'm an artist. I have a few proposals for the murals that are coming up in the discussion tonight. Thank you for serving our community, by the way. I actually was commissioned by the city of Manhattan and have a contract that they didn't follow through on from 2019. I was going to paint on the Jocelyn Community Center. The contract was signed, the city council approved the design, and Martin Betts was the interface that I had. Anyway, he dropped the ball. He did retire. So, there were some delays, and then Ailin Stewart took over. And then Alan Stewart took over. And then there was some more delays. And then they said, maybe we're, we're going to redesign the Jocelyn Center. So maybe we won't do a mural. So it was just delay, a delay. And then COVID hit. So I'd, I had already bought the liability insurance, the workers' comp insurance, and cost maybe three or 400 Golden Dubloons. Arrgh. So anyhow, I, I've got four proposals. I got four proposals going tonight for three different sites. So I just want to say, I've been ready since 2019 to paint some murals in Manhattan Beach. And I've been commissioned dozens and dozens of times by the U.S. Postal Service. I have four commemorative stamps with them. The World Wildlife Fund, the Nature Conservancy, the Nature Company, Custo Society. So I'm reliable, I come through, and I'm ready to walk the plank.
Appreciate that, Charles.
Well played, well played.
Nice reference. Anyone else in the audience that wants to speak? There we go.
Arrgh. I'll give you a good one. Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Kathy Knoll, and my husband and I are the owners of Uncorked Wine Shop on Manhattan Avenue. We are really excited to be part of our community. We've wanted to have a business here for a long time. And I wanted to speak to the outdoor dining that you discussed a couple of weeks ago. Just to give you a quick background, I've worked in business in Hermosa Beach for 12 years. We've been here, we took over Bacca's two years ago. Although we've only had the brick and mortar for a couple of years, we have given back to this community and been part of this community for a number of years. For a local family, we've given to American Martyrs, we've given, we do all the wine for the Hometown Fair, Wine Garden, Neptunian Center, you name it. We love to be and invest and partner with our communities. We are a unique business, as you may know, because we're a hybrid. We're a retail wine shop and we're wine tasting. And we are currently benefiting, benefiting from the outdoor dining. We have tables on our sidewalk, which we feel has added a really cool experience, a very, you know, added a lot of ambiance to the sidewalk and a lot of vitality to Manhattan Avenue, which in turn has helped our neighbors. We've even partnered with Slay Italian Kitchen across the street to provide food to our guests outside. So we want to be good neighbors. We've tried to dress up our side patio. You may know, we have this little brick patio on the Walk Street. And that's another thing I'd like to address. We've put flowers and succulents out there, we've put tables out there for the public to enjoy. And so we often see people from Paradise Bowl and people having lunch and coffee out there. However, our own guests are not allowed to be out there. We've been told by the city that we are allowed to have people wait for a table up there, but they cannot be up there with commercial use or to have a wine tasting. So not really sure why everybody else can use it. And we can have people up there, but we're not allowed to do one extra step. And we get asked consistently, you know, why people cannot sit up there or why they can't utilize that. And ironically, we were given the bus stop right in front of us to put tables. So that seemed a little logical to us that, and we don't really use it because there are a lot of transit people that are there waiting for the buses. So once in a while, we'll put an extra table, but we are paying the encroachment fee for that spot. So it just seems much more conducive and logical for us to have the side patio right next to us. We are just a mom and pop trying to make a living. We have a 16-year-old, we're trying to put through college in a couple of years. And as you know, the rents here and the leases here are getting more and more expensive. So this outdoor dining has really helped all of us. And it's more of an adding additional tables, not in either or situation. I've heard over and over again that we want to change, we do not want anything to change. A little charm and small town feeling. But what happens when the small businesses go away? It's only going to be the big, the big chains, and that's going to change the dynamic. So I'd like to thank the city and also the task force. And I just want to make one last point about the task force. They voted unanimously, 18 to 0, that in favor of outdoor dining and as a recommendation to consider the Walk Streets utilizing for outdoor dining.
Got it.
So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else here in the audience to speak? Seeing, anybody on Zoom?
We have Dave Titus.
All right.
Hello, Dave Titus from Williams Lakes. I'm excited to have been recommended for one of the mural projects, my proposal. And just wanted to get online and introduce myself and let you know that I'll be listening in if you have any questions about it. Basically, that's it. I'm honored to be in this meeting. I think you guys are amazing, just listening to what I've heard so far. What a great council meeting this has been so far. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. Yes, please hang on, it gets better.
Promises, promises.
Anyone else online there, Patty?
Yeah. Scurvy.
No, all right, no one else here? We'll close public comment, move to the consent calendar, item H. Council comments. Council, let's see, items one through, is that correct?
14.
14. So we have a first by Councilor Horwath. A second by Councilor Lesser.
Said Mayor.
Yes.
That was to, that was the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yes.
There's first reading of an ordinance. And I'm going to read the title. It's item six. Ordinance number 230009. An ordinance of the city of Manhattan Beach amending Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, Purchasing of Title II to increase the informal and formal bid limits and make other minor changes.
All right. No other comments? Then voting screen, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Fantastic. Appreciate that. All right, folks, our next item's up. Consent calendar, nothing, public hearings done. General business, item K number 15. Consideration of Resolution Awarding the Construction Agreement to, I can read that, Blue Violet Networks to the citywide security project. A long-waited time here at council, folks. With that, Public Works Director Lee, the floor is yours.
Good evening, our mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, City Engineer Kate Darty will be giving the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members. Let's see, looks like I'm ready to go. Oh. I am here to give a brief presentation on the citywide security cameras project and the, the construction award for that. I will start off with a brief timeline of the project and where it's been. A, a group of city staff recommended security improvements at seven city facilities to City Council in the year 2020. I'll go through which seven sites those are on the next slide. In 2021, an assessment was completed that included findings and recommendations for those seven sites. In 2022, we determined and finalized the phasing for the projects. It was recommended that the project be delivered in three phases. And we spent time with a designer to figure out how to minimize the staff impacts and also the service impacts in the city facilities during the installation. So that happened in 2022 when we finalized design. And in 2023, we completed the design and advertised the project for bid. So here are the seven phases or locations for the project. Phase one of the project includes the Public Works Yard and City Hall. Phase two includes the police fire facility. And phase three, which is a future phase, will include the Jocelyn Center, Live Oak Park, and Manhattan Heights. So because of the way we combined, we were able to work the phases, we're actually able to award both phase one and phase two tonight versus separately. So phase one, at the Public Works Yard, we will be installing a total of 17 cameras. Here at City Hall, we'll be installing 28 cameras. Over at the Combined Police Fire Department, we will be installing 53 cameras. All sites will get a network video recorder with cloud transfer capabilities to record, to save the data. And the system will include capacity for 366 days of storage. We received seven bids total on this project. The low bidder and who we're recommending award to is Blue Violet Networks. Their bid was for $476,201. Construction of this project, assuming we get award tonight, we anticipate we will kick off construction in November of this year and be completed by next summer in June, in June. We did receive one protest on this, the project. This was from the second low bidder. They're called L.A. High Tech Enterprises. They argued that the video network recorders that were proposed by the low bidder did not meet project specifications and the bid instructions. City staff reviewed the video network recorders that were proposed. Our designer reviewed it and the city attorney's office reviewed. And we determined that the video network recorders that were proposed are responsive and do meet spec. So that protest was declined. So the next steps on this project, phase one and phase two, will start construction in November. We are, city staff is preparing a public safety camera system policy, which will address having video cameras actually in workspaces. So that will be coming to council for review in the coming months. So phase one and phase two will again complete construction in June. As you'll recall, during the budget discussions earlier this year, there was about $4 million programmed in for security cameras citywide over the next five years. So we're planning to begin discussions related to prioritization of those cameras, rollout of those phases in the spring of this coming year. And that will heavily involve the police department and our IT department. And then phase three of this current project, which is already designed, will have funding to put out to bid and award in July in the new fiscal year. So tonight, we are recommending award of the construction agreement to Blue Violet Networks for the citywide security cameras project phases one and two. And authorizing the city manager and/or his, his or her designee for the agreement, to execute the agreement and also to adopt a determination of exemption pursuant to CEQA. That concludes my report. Happy to take any questions.
Well said, Katie. Councilor Napolitano has a question.
Thank you, Your Honor. I mean, in terms of locations and sites chosen here, I know we've talked about this before, but I had questions then, I guess I still have questions. What, what incidents have we had historically at these facilities that we need this additional level of security? I guess for folks looking at the police and fire station, which is probably our most secure building in the city, why we're putting cameras here rather than some of the more public areas that we've experienced crime in, whether it be the Strand or Downtown or North End or other commercial areas?
I am not aware of any specific incidences that have, happened in the police fire facility. I wonder if, Director Lee, if you can.
So I can answer a little of that. My understanding of the nexus of the project was 2019, 2020-ish. And there were some, somewhat disturbances in City Hall. And that was what the, the genesis of this project were, was. And so that's how these locations were initially decided. And perhaps Chief Johnson or one of the captains can jump in about specifically what we're trying to accomplish in the police department.
Yeah, I remember the initial one regarding some incidents here at City Hall. But still, I have to wonder.
I, I do know that the, the system we're trying to do is get a citywide perspective. We want to have a uniform approach to how we're running cameras, both internal in these seven facilities that are identified right now. And then as we expand the program in the coming years to potentially the business districts, parks, parking lots, that sort of thing. One unified system. And so there is a desire for some of these areas. Like we do have cameras in the police department jail and whatnot to make sure that those do integrate seamlessly with the, you know, the more enterprise-level system that we're moving towards.
Right. I guess I just go back to the idea, though, that, you know, as we've seen in other cities and as some residents have asked for, you know, cameras in our more public spaces where cars are coming and going. We've got the ALPRs, but that doesn't address everything, obviously, especially if you have a license plate that's been stolen from someone else. But, you know, we have, we're, we're, don't seem to be pivoting to those areas that are less secure than, than these ones. I mean, while we have issues, have had issues here at City Hall. Certain doors are locked, we've got barriers now and everything. Public Works Yard has fencing, it has gates, it has security. You have to get in and out with an ID and everything. I'm just, you know, I, I think we're going to be looked at as to why we're prioritizing city facilities over public areas.
Well, Director Lee can correct me if I'm wrong, but this project started before there was really the need identified for those less secure areas.
Understood.
And so we were already down that path and pivoted by budgeting out in the CIP for the next five years or four years to address some of those more public locations. And we can do the design work on that. But since this had already started, we're able to implement this. And as Director Lee said, have a basis and a common platform that we can adapt for those other locations that frankly can happen more quickly than what this initial phase took to get us here. But since it was designed with these city facilities in mind, we want to get that started while we can still be working on those future locations.
I guess then the follow-up question would be, though, in terms of cost. And since we already have a camera system in the jails and we don't have Brazilian murderers in it at the moment, you know, are 53 necessary there? Can we take that, reduce those, take the cost savings and set that aside for future public-facing areas?
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at that. If there's more of an emphasis on, on council's part for those other locations, it may also require that some of the funding that's in, in future years gets pulled forward. We may have to rethink the cash flows on this because I think the real expense that we were talking about to put cameras out in the public areas is, is more costly than doing it in the city facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may add also, this first contract that we're recommending to the council, it's not just cameras. It's, it's the backbone of the system that all the future cameras will be embedded on. Our bids came in quite a bit lower than we anticipated, which means there's going to be additional funds in this program ongoing. And as City Manager Knoll mentioned, your, 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 your comment about us not pivoting very quickly is very well understood. As City Engineer Darty mentioned, it's taken us quite a while to get here. We feel we have a great system in place to get this thing moving and keep it moving going forward. And, you know, the Public Works recommendation, I, I think from a project management standpoint.
By defense, I did not say that you didn't pivot quickly enough. I was just saying that, you know, maybe realizing that the public is, is asking for cameras, we pivot and try to speed those up rather than, yeah.
Completely acknowledged and understood. I, I think that, you know, with the additional funding that we do have, we have, we have designs in hand and we can do this project at this point relatively quickly and get these going and, and get a backbone system that we can start putting cameras wherever the community wants going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Lesser?
For members of the public, can you clarify whether these cameras are intended for live stream surveillance or recording?
The primary purpose at this point is recording.
Is recording.
And so, and then there's a policy that's going to be coming back to the council in the coming months that's really going to help clarify that and give assurance on what it's going to be used for.
Thank you. You're anticipating my, my question because we've talked about it. And I wanted to clarify that that policy, given the number of cameras, particularly as it relates to our employees and also members of the public, that it will capture protections on how this data will be used.
Correct. Yeah, so safeguards need to be on all sides. Not only with the footage, hopefully make the community safer and the workplace safer, but we need to make sure that people who are captured are safe from misuse of that video.
Right. And then finally, I just had a question about the wide range of bids. It's not uncommon, but the, the range here struck me as fairly wide. It ranged from a low of $476,000 to 1.358 million purportedly for the same needs or to fulfill the same objectives. Can you offer some explanation of why there was such a wide range of bids?
Well, you'll notice that the two low bidders are very competitive. And they've got strong background in this area. And so we think that they, they feel like this is going to be a, a project that they can easily tackle. And just speculating, our, our thought is, is that they're savvy contractors and have looked at our five-year CIP and see that this is potentially the start of a bigger project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to, I think, kind of what you're calling the backbone of the system, is that the, the NVRs, the network video recorders and the cloud transfer capabilities? Like, what do you mean when you say backbone?
I, I mean that. And so, so, you know, traditionally, if you, you go back decades, cameras would be recorded to tapes and then tapes would be swapped out. This is a completely digital system where the cameras, in the long run, cameras become one of the more, least expensive aspects of running a system like this. It's really in the network stores and the network connectivity that is the primary cost driver.
So, because you mentioned that when you- So, because you mentioned that when you were kind of answering my colleague, Steve Napolitano, well, you know, if we get some of this backbone in place, it'll be easier than potentially to pivot to the kind of downtown area, or, you know, we'll have something in place. So is it your thought that these network video recorders and the cloud, you would be able to, you know, if you had some cameras out here in front of Good Boy Bob or whatever that coffee shop is, if you had a camera out there, that it would record into here? Because like you said, well, the backbone, once we have the backbone, it'll be easier to do those others.
Correct. So we need to have a base system, and from there, you know, I'm simplifying it, but then at that point, you just start plugging cameras into that system.
So if we decided somehow to focus a little bit differently than we've been going, and let's say we wanted to focus with the cameras, Phase One, which is the 17 cameras at the Public Works Yard and the 28 cameras at City Hall, which I think, well, I don't know. I mean, so we focus with that, we could pivot, word of the night, to then Phase Two, we could make it be something different if we, I mean, I know that's not in the bid, but we could make that decision.
Yeah, to clarify, there's three phases of the project that have been scoped out at this point.
Okay.
Phases One and Two include City Hall and the yard, and, I'm sorry, Phase One is City Hall and the yard.
Right.
Phase Two is the police-fire facility. Phase Three would be, I think, Jocelyn Heights and another...
Manhattan Heights, yeah.
Another park facility. And so that third phase that we're not recommending award tonight, that we don't have bids on tonight, that is already designed.
But it's been designed.
And so that will be a relatively easy lift once we have our funding that we're anticipating to request from the council for the next budget process.
Got it. So it wouldn't be a matter of saying, okay, you know, I would rather do something different for Phase Two, let's do that and apply it, because it wouldn't have been scoped out and designed, and a bid would not apply.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Jim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. In looking at those locations, I too was a little concerned, and just wanted to know, was there, imagine a heat map of crime in the area, and crime in our city. How does that align with these areas? I mean, I assume since we talk about the safety of employees and visitors, okay, that we want to get coverage of where the crime activity tends to be. And I'm just wondering if we have examined that at all, to where we might reconsider some of the locations.
So your point is well-taken, and what's before you today was not based on where crimes have occurred in city facilities. It's more of a preventative, anticipating where we think we would need cameras to either help deter bad behavior, or after the fact, look for where crimes have occurred. You know, I would liken it to if we were starting a private business from the very beginning, and we had 5,000 square feet, and part of what we wanted to do is make sure that the business is secure, where we put those cameras before we even have a potential for crime. It'd be kind of like that. I do think that as we get this program out from its infancy, and we start looking at the outdoor areas, the business districts, that sort of thing, that's, I think, where all that, the crime trend-type data would definitely come into play.
So not to mix apples and oranges here, but we've had the camera on a trailer that I believe we're leasing, the Police Department. And that does seem to get moved to high-crime intensive areas. So I'm just wondering if we can, you know, since the days are different now than they were back in 2020...
You may recall in the budget, we have a second trailer budgeted for leasing. We can't purchase them, but we're leasing a second one for those mobile aspects, so...
Yeah, and the cameras, I believe, are used for investigation services, right?
Right.
Purposes.
As a deterrent, and as for investigative services as well, Mayor Protem. And we move those on, you know, a daily or weekly basis based on trends that we're seeing. So it allows us to be very quick and to pivot with crime trends that we're seeing or spikes at businesses and things like that.
Okay, and Chief, since we have you here, do you see, I mean, it seems, Councilmember Napolitano mentioned about the gates and everything, that, you know, the Public Works is locked down, you know, our other facilities are locked down, you know, the police department and the fire department and the like. I mean, would you like to see an opportunity to have some of these cameras repurposed to known hot areas or crime areas that would assist you in investigations?
Well, thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. What I've seen in my short time here, and what I've heard anecdotally from our folks who've been here a much longer time working in the police-fire building, is that while we have gates and we have cameras already, some of our cameras are, you know, edging toward end of life, and we would want to, you know, avail ourselves of getting on this enterprise system and being on one system in the city. But also, it's not that hard to get in the police department back lot, it's not that hard to get in our back lot and wiggle your way into our building. There's some places where you can jump in a planter, and you can, and I'm telling the public that, that's good, but there's places where you can get in our facility fairly decently, easily. So while we are secure from your average nice person or your, you know, stray dog, certainly from someone who wants to get in to either cause harm or who's in some sort of distress, there are still ways to do that. And on a related note, we, maybe about six months ago, we had someone jump the fence in the Public Works Yard, and we actually had to have everyone shelter in place, and they were experiencing emotional disturbance, we had to take them into custody. So while we do have fences and they are effective, they're not a total solution to the security of our facilities.
So this, so my hypothetical heat map of crime activity, I mean, are those identified? So in the future, when we are, want to go to Phase Three?
Four.
Three, Four? Okay, to Phase Four? I mean, are those pretty much identified, where it would help you and your team to, you know, it could be a crime prevention, because a bad guy would see a camera, but also capture that and be able to review it and gather evidence?
It would be my preference not to, the crime trends change over time, and what is a hotspot today will not be a hotspot in 18 months, but maybe it will be again in another 18 months. And so it would be my preference to work with a consultant on this, to look at like points of egress where we can get the most bang for our buck for these fixed cameras. And so it's more, it's less about looking at what's going on now and looking at it from a holistic perspective that will allow us to have an ongoing ability to collect evidence and use the cameras for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
You good? Councilmember Leser, again.
I just wanted to clarify with the city manager what I'm hearing in these questions that I think all of us up here have. This system was originally provisioned for the safety of city employees and city facilities, but it clearly has morphed, and the questions are going to using this system for public safety and public security. And there may be some questions about whether money should be allocated more towards the latter over the former. This system has been already bid, and we're responding to the response to the bid, and the bid award, is that right?
That's correct. All three phases have been bid. We're recommending awarding two phases, and as Director Lee pointed out, that's the basis of the system going forward. We're putting in the foundation with Phases One and Two here. So those future phases, taking into account public areas that we want to monitor, can be designed, they'd have to be designed in bid, that takes time as well. But in the meantime, we can be implementing Phases One, Two, and Three while we go out and spec out.
Okay. I have some comments, which I'll save for comments, but I just wanted to clarify what, in fact, is really the larger issue here.
It's true. This system was designed around what frankly I think the public expects, which is cameras around public facilities, so that when things do happen, we have some way of going back and saying, oh, yes, there was somebody in a plaza at 3:00 this morning, or whatever that reason is. I expect it, we all have cameras at home, I think people should have a reasonable expectation that public facilities have some sort of recording device to monitor what's going on. And that's what this is really based on.
Thank you. I have some comments, but I'll stop there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anyone else? Public comment, please. Anybody here want to talk about our new cameras coming forward? Seeing none? Anyone online? Close public comment. I'm going to jump in here first, because those of you that were in council in 2019, I guess, Napolitano and I, this happened in 19 because we wanted to build a foundation. You don't buy a piece of property and build a roof first. You put the roof on last. Exactly what we're doing here. We're aware there's crime everywhere in the city, folks. We have cameras everywhere in the city, but you have to start at the foundation. So in 2019, we brought it forward. We didn't know COVID was coming. But look at the date, the last time we talked about it, January 2020. What happened? Well, then COVID followed up. Everything froze. It would have taken us three and a half years to get us here. Because of that, we start the foundation. Bruce is absolutely correct. The idea is you build your base first. Any problem headaches we have with it, before we expand to cover the Heights, or El Porto, or Downtown, or, God forbid, anything on aviation, you better make sure your base works, right? Last thing we want to do is find out that the base doesn't work, and we go out and get aggressive and put cameras out, and we go, we can't, you know, talk to each other. They don't work at all. Worthless. We wasted all that time by jumping from the foundation to the roof. To Joe's question, or Tim Franklin's question, yes, I think he's 100% correct. What the hotspots are now may not be there a year and a half from now, or a year from now, whatever it's going to be. I don't want us to jump ahead till we know our base is set, the game plan's working, the cloud storage works perfectly, and yes, I want to know that our city facilities are protected and on camera first. Everything was perfect, then you can expand out to parks. That was the whole goal. Why I brought it up, we brought it up back then, Steve, was to cover parks, parking lots, the Heights, Jocelyn, and with that, Joe, to your point, the Downtown areas, we can expand out once we know your foundation works. This is the worst perfectly. Cameras are the least thing to have to buy. It's the backbone, as Director Lee talked about. It has to go first. But I'm not so concerned with the idea that we've forgotten the North End, or we've forgotten Downtown, or we've forgotten Rosecans, or we've forgotten Artesia. We have not. Well, we have to make sure your base works first, then you can add on. If you gave me the perfect scenario, I would have jumped past Three to Two, but I understand Director Lee's point, cover the police station, cover the fire station one, make sure all of our central core is protected, then branch out, and then unlimited, like the ALPRs were. They could go anywhere you want to. Once we know it works, and it's comfortable working with it, then I can say now the money's worth it to expand to Phase Three, and Phase Four, and Phase Five. Would I like it to be faster on timeframe? Absolutely. Director Lee knows, I've been pushing them since 2020. So let's get it built, get it ready, get it started. But it's taken us a long time to get here, folks. We don't need to go backwards. We need to make sure our base is set, then go forward. There, I'll stop. And Councilor Horwath, I guess, a question?
Well, I have a comment.
Comment.
I mean, I support this. I do, I see a difference between this project and cameras for public safety in other places, and I don't think one is exclusive of the other. And I believe the city manager alluded to, we can work on, you know, plans for a public security system or surveillance system, and that's a whole nother, you know, discussion. So it doesn't preclude us going forward with additional cameras in places in high-crime areas, wherever they may be. One thing I would like to think about maybe for a Phase Four, so I support this, and I know it takes a long time to scope it out, design it, there was COVID happening, all of these things. So hopefully, anything that we do going forward may not take quite the same timeframe. So I don't know if this is an additional Phase Four, but today we just had this wonderful ribbon-cutting on our new, on the PEC reservoir. And we've done wonderful work on the water tower, and we've got this wonderful treatment facility or treatment tank that's going to go online soon. We should have surveillance out there as well. That's, to me, something that is, could be a vulnerability for, talk about public safety, you know, our water supply. So I would like to just put that in the hopper for a future, that's not part of a motion, it's just something that I think we should be aware of for the future. Director Lee?
Yes. We designed PEC reservoir with cameras in mind, so that system will integrate with what we're proposing tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for making my idea happen before I suggested it. Terrific. Carry on.
Let's see. Thank you.
Councilmember Horwath, I'm sorry, Councilmember Napolitano. Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'll start with a question. Director Lee, when's the soonest that we could start scoping out additional areas in the public?
Yeah, I think that's really, later this fiscal year, I think we're anticipating on the staff side to start having those conversations, and we're planning to bid Phase Three come July. And so, you know, ideally, we would have Phase Three implemented, you know, either midway or mostly through next fiscal year, and at that point in time, have good ideas of what we want this, you know, hypothetical Phase Four to look like. And so I would say that, I think we could start having those conversations internally at the staff side later this fiscal year. Once we have a system in place and we know, we get some muscle memory on how we're working on it, at the end of the day, we really anticipate that the police department and IT are going to be integral in determining where the cameras should go from a value perspective, and then also from a cost perspective, networking what makes the most sense to do that.
Thank you. So from my comments, I'm not going to pull my support from this, we need it, but, you know, a lot of cameras at facilities are more concerned with liability than they are actual security most of the time, especially since you're watching something that already happened. You know, I agree with the foundation argument for this, but I also think that current events demand that we also embark on the public-facing cameras sooner rather than later, and that, you know, my approval of this is on the condition, whether anyone cares or not, that we begin that, like I said, sooner rather than later, and not wait. I appreciate that we want to see that the cameras are up and running, that's what we pay these folks for. They better be up and running, the system better work. We've had issues with systems before, but if it takes these many phases, it's taken this long, and COVID and everything else, though, it's still taken quite a while to get to where we are now, right? It's taken essentially three and a half, four years to get where we are. I don't want to take three and a half, four years to put cameras in the public areas. We know that we're always going to need some sort of camera system in our commercial areas, especially the Downtown, especially, I mean, talk about areas where there's both crime and liability are things like parking lots, the pier parking lots, the Downtown area, where there's just a capture. Folks come in going, the North End, Sepulveda, obviously, there are areas that we want to have cameras, same reason we have ALPR readers where they are, because they ingress and ingress out of the city, and we hope to get some identification from them. So, you know, I guess my point is, yes, okay, this, but I don't think the public is going to understand as much as we understand ourselves, the priority of this versus, you know, putting the public-facing cameras three years out. We really need to get those online within, I don't even know when, but sooner than, you know, Phase Three is scheduled for 2025. That's not going to be acceptable to the public, it's not acceptable to me. You know, I think we need to find a way, whatever that is, with our contractors, to say, all right, start looking here, have the input from our team, from PD, from Public Works, from everybody, as to where we need to put these additional cameras out in public and get going on those, you know, this next year.
I see you. Councilmember Leser?
I'm in support of moving forward with the award and the construction contract. Four of us on the dais were part of those 2019 initial discussions where we supported measures to protect our employees and our city facilities. I think what's happened in the interim is, one, this has taken a lot longer, two, there is, I think, a need, just as Councilmember Napolitano articulated, for more public-facing cameras, and three, as one who is now looking at how this initial idea kind of evolved to see the number of cameras that are now focused here, granted, this is now a fixed bid that was bid on, and we can't really revise it, there are a lot of cameras here. And at least for me, I think, like some of my colleagues, I was just thinking, gosh, with this amount of infrastructure being based here, couldn't some of it, particularly if we're building this backbone, be put out sooner than later to be more public-facing? I recognize we can't revise the bids now that it's gone through this process, and anything, we don't want to slow this down further. So I will be in favor of moving forward of this item, but also consistent with what was just said, to move quickly with coming up with some proposals for public cameras.
Thank you. To address two points, I think Chief Johnson, Captain Agav, and I, we've all seen what Beverly Hills has done as an idea of cameras, and their people, how they manage and what they do. They had a great head start on us, obviously, they were way ahead, and for different reasons, but the point... But the point being, it's proactive, to the people's residents' point. We're not sitting on our hands. It's proactive to give the chief and the team more of a tool that we don't have today. Yes, we realize it's not live. It is preventative, being proactive preventative, that's one part of it. But I agree with the peer idea, the public parks, all that's great. My point was, if we had a wish list, to Council Polatano's point, that Phase Three, even though we designed Phase Three, you haven't bid for Phase Three, is that correct?
It's been designed, but not bid.
But not bid. So I think later on tonight, we could talk about adding on to address Phase Three, designed but not bid, to ramp up what you and Joe talked about, to look at other options, to make that park and pier and something else forward, public-facing, separate from what we're doing now, and add on tonight to switch the priority of Phase Three, or add on to Phase Two priority. So instead of waiting until 25, to look, you can jump and look at those things now. They may not be the hotspots that Chief Johnson has now. To Joe's point, it may switch, but there'll be public-facing, and not waiting until 26, 27 to put them out there. But that's the background of where this all came from. I think we're all very inspired by seeing what we saw prior to at Beverly Hills, and what they're doing with it, and their success. And some things were different, different geography than they have there. We don't have Rodeo Drive, we have MBB. And we have an ocean, they have the hills. So a little different what they're doing, but we watched that technology, and I agree with Chief Johnson and Captain Agav. We all saw it and went, wow, there's some good ideas we could use here. This is step one to build that base. And I agree with Stephen, Joe, and everyone here. We want to get there, but we have to have a foundation first, then you spread out. So with that, I'll stop. May I return Franklin?
Okay, thank you. So I'm encouraged by what I heard about a second camera trailer. Because I think the first one was pretty effective. I mean, I see that's moved around quite a bit, so I would assume that it's been effective. And so now having a second one would be helpful there. So that can address some of the public-facing. I agree, you need to get a foundation down with technology. It's got to work, it's got to be close, it's got to, you know, be able to be fine-tuned and changed and troubleshoot. And so that's a good idea, to get that done. I also, it's been expressed, so I won't repeat it, but I would just say that the quicker we can get to public-facing, I think the better. I'm not sure if we heard too many incidents at these facilities, where we've heard so many other incidents around other locations in the city. So it looks like we did a good job bidding. And there'd be money available in order to do that, so that we can go ahead and beef up the security in other parts of the city, and be mobile with it. I mean, we can go ahead and, you know, we've learned that we can, if not tap into home cameras, at least certainly make them available to detectives to go ahead and do their investigations and the like. So I think it's a good start, I'm going to be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think it's important, I think we're trying to make the right step here and move forward. I appreciate that. So no questions for you, sir, just want to make sure you're understood what we're trying to get to, and thank you for your honesty, and sticking with it, with me poking a stickie all on to get here. But we're finally here, and that's the good news about it, and we'll go from there. So with that, no other questions or comments? I think, I'm disappointed, though, folks, that no one here, for the public, showed up or called in on public safety. Other meetings, they would light me up like a pinata about public safety, but tonight, they went silent on something that's exactly what we're talking about. Proactive public safety measures, and no one showed up. Let's see voting screen, please.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you all. Thank you. And our next item up is Item 16. Consideration of Police Department Incident Notification Protocol to City Council and the Community. Police Chief Johnson. All right.
Good evening again, Mayor Montgomery, members of the City Council. Rachel Johnson, your police chief. And I'm before you tonight to discuss our notification protocols of the police department. And I want to begin by emphasizing my understanding, and by extension, the police department's understanding the importance of timely notifications to both our internal stakeholders as well as the community. Our notification processes are governed by key policies, including Police Department Standing Order 2301, Major Incident Notification Policy, P32, Public Alerts Police Department Policy 316, and the Police Department Major Incident Notification Policy 327. Now, what we've tried to do with Police Department Standing Order 2301 was capture the essence of all of these policies while providing our supervisors the framework to make appropriate decisions regarding notification. The standing order includes a carefully curated list of notable events which reflects situations of significance and public interest that warrant notification to the city manager and the city council. Communication on notable events begins with internal notifications made by the on-duty supervisor when an event has occurred. This initial notification is made to the police department executive staff. And following this, a notification is made to the city manager, and based on the type of event, a notification is made to the city council or to key personnel through the major incident notification email distribution list. These notifications are completed by the watch commander. Now, generally, when the incident impacts other departments within the city, a notification is made to the major incident notification email distribution list, which does include the city council. We do this to ensure appropriate personnel are apprised in order to make repairs or other adjustments. If the incident does not impact other city departments, a notification is made solely to the city council. Now, for public alerts, the council's aware we use Alert South Bay, which many of us remember fondly as Nixel or Everbridge. With this Alert South Bay, we use those for emergency alerts, which are those notifications where we want to advise the public to avoid a specific area, to shelter in place, or evacuate an area. Now, through the end of August, your police department has responded to 10,719 dispatch calls for service and generated another 13,763 calls for service through proactive police work and self-initiated activity. Now, that averages out to about 101 calls for service each day, between the dispatch calls for service and the proactive work. And while most of these calls fall in what we consider the police department routine police work, I realize that sometimes our response to these calls generates community concern because we show up with lights, sirens, and lots of police cars. And what we endeavor to do is try to bridge the gap between those events, not meeting the criteria for an Alert South Bay notification, but still noteworthy due to the size of our response or the nature of the crime through the use of press releases and social media posts. In all cases, we strive to find the balance between providing the public with timely information that's actionable while still protecting the integrity of our investigations. Moving forward, we plan to periodically review and update Standing Order 2301 to align with evolving priorities, community concerns, and emerging situations. The weekly and monthly updates that are provided to the community will also continue to evolve to ensure we are providing the public with the information they need to remain informed on current crime trends and public safety priorities. I realize that this is an area of continuous growth for us at the police department to ensure that we remain timely and relevant in our communications. And that concludes my overview, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Councilor Lesser, first up.
Chief Johnson, how will members of the public notice the difference with this new protocol, or these new protocols, 2301 in effect? How does it differ than what the practice has been in the past versus what is the aspirational goal with this protocol in effect?
Well, most of Standing Order 2301 encompasses some of our internal notifications, notifications to you, members of the city council. We essentially attempted to codify what we had already been doing and capture all of that in a way that we made fewer mistakes and had fewer things slip through the cracks. Now, with regard to our public notifications, you know, as we've developed Standing Order 2301, we've worked closely with our community affairs team to ensure that any time there's something of note or anything that we feel the public would benefit from knowing that we are continuing to be more diligent and getting those things out. And an example of this would be a couple of months ago when we had a residential burglary series where it was corner houses with second-story balconies were being targeted. You know, rather than wait for the weekly cycle of our weekly update, we put out a community alert right away through our social media channels just to ensure that we are being timely and trying to provide the best, most accurate information at all times. We are, you know, our community affairs unit went from being one officer and one office assistant to a sergeant officer and office assistant. And it's increased our capacity to be able to make sure that we are providing more scrutiny to the things that are going on in the police department so that we can give the public better notifications.
How do we ensure, how does the police department ensure that these protocols are sustainable? Because there have been periods perhaps where there hasn't been quite as timely notification to the public on certain events in the past. And I'm just wondering, how can we ensure that this is sustainable, or the department ensure that this is sustainable?
Well, certainly, that's a great question, Councilmember Lesser. And certainly, we are trying not to bite off more than we can chew. Which is why we've had some recommendations to use Twitter and other things like that for real-time notifications. And quite frankly, it's something that we can't sustain on an ongoing basis. And so before we are pushing out a protocol or trying something out, we're trying to make sure it's something that we can do on an ongoing basis based on the normal amount of personnel we have at any given time. So we're being very thoughtful in what we are doing and also what we're telling you we can do.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fair.
Anyone else on council have a question for Chief Johnson on the protocols? Anyone?
No questions.
Joe, you good?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Chief Johnson. Anyone in the public have a comment or question about the protocols? Seeing none. Patty, anyone on Zoom? Amazing, amazing. All right, we'll close public comment, and...
We just got one, a last-minute one. Rita Crabtree Compa.
Okay.
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and to the police department for finding ways to make sure that the public is more updated. Public safety is highest priority, and as everyone sitting on the dais right now has always indicated, it is the highest priority. And by these measures, the public can recognize that you're working very hard to do that. So just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom or online?
Uh, no.
Happy we had one. Thank you. Council comments? Councilor Lesser?
I'm just going to start out by saying thank you. Thank you to the chief and the entire leadership team for preparing this protocol and attempting to share with the community more information about crime, more facts. We all are dealing with the fact that social media is out there with a contrary explanation of what's happening. And it's all the more important for government agencies to do better in communicating facts and to get facts out there to the public. And I think that this protocol is really a great foundation for us to be able to do that. So I thank the chief, and I thank the police department team.
Thank you. I see a first by Councilor Lesser, a second by Councilor Polatano. Mayor Tim Franklin is going to push the button and speak.
Yes, thank you. And also thank you to the police department for, and Chief Johnson, for putting these protocols into place. I kind of feel that we can't do too much. I'm looking at my own personal action that I've taken in this area where there's finally a point where you hear about things, or they happen to you, and then you wake up, and then you do something proactive. For me, I mean, it's minor in comparison to what a lot of people have gone through, but somebody broke into my car, you know, in the middle of the night. And as my wife jokingly said, how could you tell? So they went through everything, and they took some of my prized CDs.
Neil Diamond?
Neil Diamond, you know.
They still make CDs?
Well, you know, CDs, we got a, you know, we got an old car, what can I say? But that happened. And, okay, you know, that sort of got my attention. And then it happened again. And then I said, okay, I'm going to change my home protocol. Okay, and so every night, before I go to bed, I open up the front door, and I aim my key at my car, and I lock my car. Okay, that's called hardening the target. I don't know what everybody else's threshold is. Hopefully, nothing bad happens to you. But hearing reports of some of the things that are happening, we know the police can't be everywhere. We've got great neighbors and friends who see something, say something, which is very, very important. But you got to do something, okay? And the do something is harden the target. Make it harder for these thieves to find the easy, you know, the easy theft. People who own businesses, got to get those cameras looked at, get them modernized, just like we're going through. And, you know, I really appreciated the fact that Public Works Director Eric Lee said, "Look at City Hall, look at our facilities as though we're a new business." And that's what you would do as a new business, right? You would get your cameras ready, you'd seek out some help for securing your premises, implement best practices, and we all sort of need to do that. Okay, because it's a different, it's a different time. I mean, we would be naive to think that it isn't. And we're hearing these things, but let's derive some good out of it. Let's make sure your doors are secure, make sure your upper stair windows and doors are locked because people can scale. Get rid of ladders that you store on the side of the house because they're going to take those ladders and climb in, okay, and steal. When you go to the beach, don't put your keys on the front left tire because there are organized gangs that, we've done a great job of stopping a lot of them, but they are watching you. And some of the surfers, oh, no, I take my key and I bury it in the sand in this plastic bag. And the next thing you know, not only is that thief breaking into their car, but taking the car to their home, and breaking into their home, and then stealing the car. And so, you know, that's the value I see in the crime reports. I feel badly for the people who are the victims. But anything we can do to prevent more people from becoming more victims is going to be a good thing. So I support this, and I applaud this level of reporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Since Rep. Franklin kind of went that direction, I'm going to pile on here for a second and say that we have a very safe city compared to other cities, especially in LA County. Some residents will tell you it's not safe. They believe in their minds that it's not safe, and their perception becomes our reality. And I want to reset that and say the reality is we're a very safe city. Fantastic police, we're everywhere. You can't be everywhere, Joe, to catch every single incident. But I remember when Chief Johnson gave a crime stat at a meeting of the day, when you said it, Chief. Look at the crime stats, they don't tell you the story behind it. If people would lock their doors, especially garage doors, half the burglaries would go down. Not leave your laptop on your front seat. Actually, remember to lock your corridor. Well, we didn't used to have to lock our doors. That was a long time ago. Pre-COVID, that may have been something. But now it's a different situation. Now, I could get into DA's issue and what he won't prosecute. It's a different world out there. But basic common sense should apply, right, Joe? It's like, lock up, folks, the number will cut in half. Here we go. To the chief's next item, I've been on council, Steve, not catching up with Steve yet. But in 15 years, there was one time, one time I only witnessed a lapse in police notification to council. It's very, very rare, folks. Yes, unfortunately, it happened. Timing wasn't the best, it happened. So I applaud the chief and her command staff for catching up here and what we used to do. In fact, the city manager, Jeff Dolan, used to have me wake up. Chief, major notification, the mayor, our way down, that the major incident, your policy 327? Anything on that list you gave us now? If I didn't answer by phone, PD come in my door, wake me up? The mayor advised me to get that wake-up call. I'm fine with it. But Councilor Hall, we said, don't wake her up. But everybody else, I had no problem with that. If it's that major on policy 27 list, I think it's something you have latitude to wake us up. If it's that major, let us know. Whether I hear about it from you at 2:00 in the morning, and then Kane next calling me 8:00 in the morning saying, what about this? What about that? So I'm glad, you know, we're here, you get a chance to redo things in your own vision, in your own way, here. I support it as well. I think we're good to go. Any comments, sir?
No, it's "Arb" instead.
With that, voting screen, please.
I hope you're getting a donation for every time you say something. That would be cool.
Let's join in.
Aye.
Waiting for someone.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, chief. Thank you, camp.
For the benefit of the public, that was to receive and file?
Yes.
Okay.
Our next item up is item 17, Cultural Arts Commission, Recommendations for Sculpture Garden Options. Parks Rec Director Lehman is up. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Ailen Stewart. Cultural Arts Manager will be presenting this item.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. At the March 7th, let's see, at the March 7th, 2023 meeting, City Council directed the Cultural Arts Commission to develop a work plan. The commission put together a work plan with strict timelines consisting of phases two of the utility box certification program and the mural program, as well as redeveloping the Sculpture Garden program. Commission worked with staff to develop parameters for the Sculpture Garden program and identified several challenges pertaining to installation of the artwork and permitting, most importantly, discussing the need for approvals and permits, and the length of time and level of expertise required from artists for installation, engineering specs, architectural design, and permitting work. This new standard will take longer time for the installation of artwork of similar size and scope as to what we're used to seeing from previous Sculpture Garden cycles, such as the timeline and process that we are currently seeing with the North Manhattan Beach artwork that was approved there and the artist is working to install. Commission and staff explored the new installation parameters and came up with four options of alternatives that are outlined in the staff report. In order to get more artwork into the community faster, but still be able to display substantial pieces, the Cultural Arts Commission recommends a blended approach of option one and option four. Option one is essentially the same Sculpture Garden program that you're used to seeing, excuse me, where a large artwork is selected and installed in a designated area, but factoring in the longer timeline and calling out the process in advance to the artist so they're prepared. This will include creating, delivering, and installing the artwork, as well as all the necessary permits, engineering drawings, architectural design site surveys, and any other documentation required to obtain the permits by the artist. In order to offset this significant cost and additional time associated with the work, the commission recommends increasing the artist stipend from $12,000 to $25,000 for a two-year loan period. The commission recommends starting this program with three sculptures. At the same time, the commission recommends launching option four, I'm going to skip a couple slides, in order to begin bringing artwork to the community sooner. After reviewing the municipal code with the community development team, staff has retained that there are a few exceptions to the permitting requirements. These include smaller objects under five-and-a-half feet tall outside of the coastal zone. Option four proposes three small groupings of three steel or concrete pedestals where small sculptures can be placed and rotated out much more expediently. Smaller artworks would also open the pool to more candidates, such as artists who are not able to work on a larger scale, as well as other materials that are not conducive to larger-scale artwork. And all, because the artwork will be installed on pedestals which will bear the brunt of the load and be able to be mounted without those strict permitting requirements. If approved, staff in the Cultural Arts Commission will develop the exact size parameters for this exemption, as well as other safety concerns associated with this project, along with size, shape, and material of the pedestals. Staff will also discuss any in-house work that could be done by Public Works to assist in this project. If approved, the selected option would go back to the Cultural Arts Commission at their next meeting in October, so the work can begin immediately. Staff recommends that City Council discuss the options and recommendations and provide direction on this item. I'm happy to briefly outline options two and three that were not recommended by the commission, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm standing by for questions. Here's our first one. Counselor Haworth.
Just a quick clarification. I believe I know the answer, but the Cultural Arts Commission is recommending these options, not just the art staff.
Correct. The Cultural Arts Commission are the ones. So staff proposed, came up with the four options, and the Cultural Arts Commission decided to blend the two.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Ailen? Any questions? Rep. Franklin has a question.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I'm counting the numbers of sculptures and the like, and they're going to be spread around the city. Has there been any thought given to, I don't know, a centralized theme or something, so where, you know, people go to Manhattan Beach, because that's the city of sculptures, or something like that? And, you know, I just see now that we're going to be adding multiples of sculptures, right? So it would be, on the smaller ones, I had the math before, but is it...
In the smaller ones, there's nine.
It'd be nine, okay.
With this vision, of course, could be adjusted.
Yeah, and nine plus another...
Plus the three of the larger ones.
Yeah, okay, so that's 12. Okay. Just, you know, you go traveling, and you read about a city, and they go, "Oh, they're known for their sculptures in a certain, you know, and their..." I mean, I don't want to restrict an artist or anything, but has there, since we're talking about a lot more quantity of art out there, is there just thoughts? Have there ever been discussions about a theme?
Sure. That's something that can be addressed and researched. Typically, in my and my colleagues' experience, artists don't like themes. They don't like to, so you're going to get a lot fewer submissions. So you can absolutely put in a theme, and you'll cut your submissions, I don't know, by 50 to 75%, just because, A, artists don't like to work with a prescribed theme, and B, a lot of times, particularly with sculpture of this magnitude, it takes a very, very long time for an artist to complete the work. So they might be applying with a piece that they might have been working on already, or they might have conceived of in the past, they didn't have a reason to make, and it doesn't fit into this theme, so they're, eh, forget it, not worth it.
Okay.
You good?
Uh, yes.
Speaker. I'm not sure what that means. It's on our screen, it's speaker. Who is speaker? No? Close alarm. Any other questions? Thank you. I'm standing by there. Public comments? Any public, do I have any comments about this item? Seeing none here. Let's go. Okay, I'm sorry. Steve, you have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
All right. Anyone on Zoom? Patty? Okay, we'll close public comment. Counsel will start with Counselor Polatano first.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I've seen iterations of this over my time on council, and as was said, this has happened before. We used to have more of these, Art on a Pole, it was called. And, you know, either way, you slice or dice this thing, it's really rent-a-sculpture. And I think we're beyond that at this point. I would suggest a different path for us, because, well, I appreciate the sentiment, you know, I think what we started doing it, and we started asking for a lot of it, or advertising for a lot of different pieces, so we can spread around the city, because we really didn't have anything permanent out there. We didn't have a lot of artwork in the city. Well, we're getting that artwork now. We've got the utility boxes finally up. We're, we've got the murals. We've got more murals that we're looking at now. So I think, you know, as far as temporary sculpture goes, you know, when we talked about quantity and everything else, I'd rather have one good piece than nine mediocre ones. I really think that what we should be doing is asking the commission to go shopping and bring up some recommendations for us. I'd rather consolidate the funding for this, buy one good piece at a good price out of several that they review and recommend to council to keep it permanently. It's going to be at a higher price point to do that, but we've had some success. We've bought some of the temporary ones that we liked before. There's certainly art out there for sale, and there's many different outlets now where you can find that. And I think that as long as the pieces meet the criteria that is needed for being outdoors and weathering correctly, and being weatherproof and other things for a number of years, that we should buy pieces and do it permanently. I'd rather buy one piece of permanent good art per year over several years than just try and cram nine in here and try and spread it around outside the coastal zones so we don't run into issues with them. It just seems like we're trying a little bit too hard to get something that we're only going to have for one or two years. And I don't see the point in that anymore. I think we're getting good and better mural submissions. I think that we started off, we've got some good ones, but we're building up on that. And again, these are things that we can enjoy for years. The temporary artwork, I just don't see a lot of point for that anymore. I think, you know, that's what the galleries are for. That's what our art center is for, to display temporary. I'd rather buy permanent art for the city at this point.
I'm set. Counselor Haworth.
Wow. Well, that's a really interesting idea, I think. And maybe there's a bifurcation of the bifurcation that could happen. Or, you know, maybe that we could do some sort of combo, if you will. I just, I was originally pressing my button to say thank you for the getting, sort of putting aside the art on a pole concept, because it was, I didn't care for it. That's, but art is, you know, subjective like that. So, you know, I really love the idea of spending some of the art fund on something meaningful and large, and maybe less than more, but I also like the idea of something that could change, so that we're not tied to, you know, those pieces. And so it's, you know, it's maybe one large-scale permanent artwork, and then three or four temporary ones, you know, something like that. Would that be rather nine and two, you know, because I feel that it is fun to see the different pieces, more, you know, some of those different pieces, and to see them change out. So I wouldn't want to go just the permanent route. So I like what you're saying, and just want to have the ability to have some change. And also, you mentioned the Cultural Arts Center. I'm just going to give it a plug right now. If you haven't been out there in years, or a minute ago, it's, the shows there are so great these days. Kudos to our staff, and what a gem. Back to the measure of hand.
All right. Rep. Franklin, do you have comments?
Sure. Thank you, and thank you to the commission for putting this together. I guess, you know, I agree with Councilmember Napolitano, is put more efforts into one, make it meaningful, make it last, make it, you know, permanent. So I kind of asked, if there was a theme or just something, it just seems like we just got, there's going to be so many pieces coming in and out to add to your permanent sculptures. We've got the, you know, the surf riders sculpture, the Catalina Classic sculpture. We're going to have the surfboard sculpture in the north end here pretty soon. I just think it's going to be a better thing to manage. I just think it's going to be a better thing to maintain, and we'll maintain ownership of it, and just get a, you know, a proper expressive piece and go with the one. Just think it'd be simpler all around. Thank you.
Counselor Lesser?
I would support Councilmember Haworth in trying to come up with perhaps fewer permanent pieces, more money behind them, so we can get good pieces that Councilmember Napolitano suggests, but keep the capacity for some of the temporary shows. And to the extent that our staff can sustain it and not make that the highest priority, but really trying to commission great artwork for the long term, but still have the ability to do some of the shorter-term shows, I would support it.
Can I hope you get a second bite of the apple here?
Oh, thank you. Well, so, and when you say shows, you don't mean the cultural arts, you mean pieces?
I meant pieces. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess I'm going to try to, well, actually, could I ask a question of Ailen, Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
So, you know, as Councilmember or Mayor Proton Franklin said, want to thank the commission for the work that they did, was there any talk at the commission level about, well, can we buy permanent work? Or, you know, did they consider this at all?
Yes. So if you take a look in the staff report, I think it's actually option two. Oh, my PowerPoint got up. It doesn't matter. So option two was suggested by staff, because so much work would go into particularly option one, that for the same amount of work, and in many cases, the same amount of money, you could get a permanent piece, and you could actually commission exactly what you want, rather than maybe choose from what's available. I think the commission really wanted to respond to the fact that the Sculpture Garden item was on their work plan as it had been envisioned before, and they wanted to make sure that they didn't kind of suddenly take this pivot and surprise everyone with, you know, kind of an idea that hasn't been, you know, throw out this temporary idea and accept this permanent idea. So I think that's why they chose to push forward, again, those temporary ideas, rather than really considering the permanent sculpture. But they did discuss it. They didn't dislike the idea. They just felt that perhaps council wanted to see the temporary artworks.
I see. I see. Like, it would, okay, so it was sort of like, hey, because I remember, this was the work plan from back in March, right? Is that what it was? Gotcha. Okay. So, I mean, so the option, the staff recommendation, one and two, one and four, you know, you could actually make, instead of development of option one, it could be development of option two, right? And then option four, you know, become...
Are you asking her a question?
No, I'm sorry. You may sit down. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Well, if I was playing at home, though, the word pivot was used, so drink.
That was an ugly laugh. You can drink at that, too. Not to encourage bad behavior on a Tuesday night. So anyway, so I would say, I'm trying to cobble together something so that we can approve some sort of program, because that is what, you know, it's been hard to wrap our hands around, a program, right? This is going to guide us in how we do this. So I appreciate all the different ideas. So I see, can I, can I...
Yes, when you're done.
I'm going to cobble. So maybe for the bifurcated approach, I would combine option two, which is a permanent sculpture, and we would have to decide, you know, how many years we were going to do it. Are we going to do, every three years, we're going to acquire a permanent sculpture, right? So I would, I would like some help figuring that out. And then, in terms of option four, the only thing I don't love about, well, option four, I don't think we need nine. And I'd make it five, four or five. But I also don't know that it has to be pedestals. I mean, sometimes artwork or sculpture isn't on a pedestal, like, I mean, this guy, I guess, sorry, can you see? You know, it's sort of a, it doesn't matter. Anyway, it doesn't have to be a pedestal. I understand why the commission and maybe staff came up with the pedestal idea, because it would be easy to swap things out, right? It would be easier to swap things out. But what you come up with there is, again, that theme idea, which I don't love, because it does limit artists. It might limit the artist who applies, because their sculpture has to be able to be affixed to the pedestal. So that's the only reason I would question the pedestal. But I would say, option four, make it, you know, make it five works, and I'd be agnostic on how much money and how many years.
Are you good?
That's just what I'm talking about. Yeah, I'll make a motion. No, I won't make the motion yet, because I need some help with it, but that's where I'm starting.
Okay. I'll circumvent the beginning. In 2009, we had, as Counselor Haworth calls, art on a pole. I actually liked, remember those marked, the bicycle one that we should have purchased, we didn't, it was our mistake, we should have purchased it, instead of leasing it. And also, the "believe" sign, I think the council behind us put up there, we should have purchased that one, too. But we learned, right? Mistakes, we should have purchased. I'm more in line with Counselor Polatano, purchase versus lease. Look at the cost of leasing. You actually acquire the art instead of paying for lease rates. So why would I want to lease it when I could buy it? Now, I wish Cultural Arts Commission had said, "Hey, we found 15 great pieces of art. Whether you lease or you buy, here they are. And tonight, we're going to pick out, to your point, pick out these eight that we all agree on are fantastic, just buy them." For once, it's not a matter of money, because the art fund is a lot of money there. We're on a clock to spend it, but we're not hurrying to get to that point. My point is, why not go back, and what you even talked about, go back to give us, "Hey, these are our top 15 choices you, Ailen, have found." Cultural Arts said, "Yes, here are the great choices. Let us pick from those." If we want to do a blend, as Counselor Haworth talked about, we purchase nine or 10, and maybe you lease three or four, whatever it's going to be. And then we're on the road. By the time we get back to do this again, we're in 2024. We might as well go back to '26 or '27 or '28. We're still going to be playing this game of whack-a-mole with art. So we need to make up our minds, folks, and go back and forth, what you want to do, and just do it. So I'll stop there.
Okay, so, did I press the button?
Yes. Yes.
Let the record show. So I think what I, maybe there's a disconnect or a disconnect with what it means, like a program. What does a sculptural art program mean versus where are the works of art that we're choosing? And I think what's, you know, the Parks and Rec staff, it feels like, are coming up with a program that, you know, can be implemented when it's, so it's not coming to us with the works of saying, hey, we plan on every so many years, spending the time to come to you with X, you know, amount of artwork and for X amount of dollars, you know, and that's kind of what you guys should plan, right? So I see this kind of as a two-step process, and maybe that's too many steps. I think I hear that. But I'm fine kind of giving them some guidance tonight based on these different program ideas. But yeah, let's see, then go out and find the art. Go out and find some permanent types of art or, you know, temporary art because we would like to see that happen. So I would hate for us to, I mean, I guess I'm asking you.
Make a motion.
Aye. Okay. So I recommend approving a Sculpture Garden concept program with the notion being a combo of option two, permanent art every two years, so $75,000 every two years for a piece of artwork. And then add on to that option, let me just, you know, four, which is for five temporary pieces every two to three years, I would say it, with the option to purchase if we like them.
That's your, that's your motion?
I think so.
Okay, stop there for a second. Councilor Napolitano?
Yeah, I guess I wonder why every two years for permanent. But, you know, to me, it's like, to simplify it, I would say, Arts Commission, go find us 15 pieces that we can either rent or purchase outright, and we'll choose from those whether we want to rent or purchase them.
You know what? That would be a completely different motion I would support.
Why don't you withdraw your motion then?
Or just amend it to that. I'll second it.
I'm amending it to that.
Take your motion then.
Cultural Arts Commission, thank you for the work that you've done. Now, Cultural Arts Commission, please go out and find us 15 pieces that we can then determine whether it's temporary or permanent and.
We'll choose from those 15.
We will choose from those 15. We're not necessarily going to choose all 15.
Correct.
Thank you.
I see him. I'm sorry, Councilor Lesser, go first.
I'm inclined to support the motion, but I did want to check with city staff as to whether there's an issue with a proposal that calls for art to purchase or potentially lease. I mean, do we need this segregation or is that the standard practice in the art world? I just want to make sure we're not proposing something that doesn't follow a best practice.
And I'll defer to Ailen on that question, but point of clarification is, would you like the Cultural Arts Commission to look at 15 pieces of existing art that's already out there or do an RFP and then bring the top 15 forward?
I would defer to them, and if there's 15 out there that they like, then we don't need to commission. If we feel like we need to commission because there's nothing out there that we like, then bring that, back that information.
Thank you.
So a couple of points. One, that you just clarified in terms of reaching out, and we will work with the commission to double-check and sort of see how that works. There's not, there's not necessarily a shopping center you can go to to get all of your.
I got plenty of websites for you.
Well, there are those plenty of websites. So we can definitely go that route and kind of go and take a look and say, oh, well, you know, this person has made this object that's already available and bring those forward. We could absolutely do that. Or we could do a slightly more targeted RFP that says, you know, roughly what we want. In addition to that, in terms of the loan versus installation, it, or excuse me, loan versus ownership, it doesn't really matter. It's just a matter of how much money we're willing to invest in it and the fact that whether we are keeping it on loan or we are purchasing it completely, that amount of work that needs to be there in terms of permitting and engineering specs and all of those kinds of things, which is a fairly large lift, that work stays the same regardless of how long the artwork is here.
Okay, helpful. I'm used to the rigidity of past initiatives of council. That's why I sought to clarify. Thank you, Ailen, but I would be supportive of whatever direction you're heading there.
Yeah, I mean, to those points, the engineering, permitting, all those things, you're doing it once when you purchase it rather than over and over again with the loans. And, you know, some will require more, some will require less. I think it's, if it's over six feet, then you have an issue with the Colts Commission. If it's under six feet, you don't have an issue with the Colts Commission. So there's, just depends on the artwork. And that's really, you know, we'll see what comes back. But RFP, I fear an RFP at this point because it'll be another six months to a year, then we go through this.
Okay, great. Wait, Councilman Hoerth first, then I'll wrap up.
Are you sure?
Yes, go ahead. I'll defer. Go ahead.
I'll let him ask.
I just wanted to clarify for the motion, is there an amount of money that's been specified or is it open-ended? That, I was just speaking to clarify.
I'll address that point when we come back here. Because I think it's listed in your $35,000 per, doesn't say who buy one or two sculptures. It's $35,000 every two years.
I think you get the 15, I'm just throwing that number, other 15 examples with price tags on them. We choose from there because price is always part of the equation as well.
So we should open into your question. Open into.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, it is, there is, it's pretty loose, what we're asking. You know, I mean, I, Mr. Mayor, when you mentioned a couple of the statue or a couple of the big pieces that we had before, I do, I did love those and it was because they were sort of big in scale. And so you may get a range of the scale, which would be fine, right? Like we, for us to select from.
I believe you will.
I believe we will.
Arr.
Arr.
All right, I'll wrap up here and bring us home. I dislike conformity and anything I see out there. So I welcome diversity and I welcome all types. I know preconceived notion. I don't want to see all art, we're talking about the aquarium. I know we're the next to see, but I don't want to see all art look the same. That's the beauty of it, not having it look the same. I want no restriction. And bring it all back to Steve's point, bring in 15 and maybe we find, search it through the webs out there, people that you know, put the word out, look in the buy and let us go. Otherwise, dreaded RFP comes back and we're talking Christmas 26 again. So we need to start it, move it. I'm glad, Councilman Hoerth, proposal. A second, Councilman Napolitano? We're good to go? This voting's great.
Motion passes 5-0.
Amen.
Yeah, hopefully that was clear as mud for the commission and the staff. Great.
Good?
Thank you.
Shopping list starts tomorrow.
I'm excited.
Starts next item.
Our next item here, actually. Item 18.
Take a short break.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let's take your, how much time do you need? Five minutes?
10.
10 minutes. He goes, 10 minutes, we'll take a break, come right back, knock this out.
We're live.
All right, everybody, welcome back. We start back up with item number 18. Consideration of the Cultural Arts Commission recommendations of mural artwork proposals, locations, and costs, and dispersed with about $253,000 from the Public Art Trust Fund. Parks Direct Director Lehman, floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I will again turn it over to Alan Stewart, our Cultural Arts Manager. But I did want to take a moment to recognize her as well as the Cultural Arts Commission. There were 116 submissions, so what you're seeing tonight is the best of the best. And I'll turn it over to Alan. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hello again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Nice to see you, everyone. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, it's my pleasure to review with you the option of the mural program as recommended by the Cultural Arts Commission. As Director Lehman mentioned, we did have 116 submissions, which staff vetted down to 100 qualified applications that were reviewed by the Cultural Arts Commission, and of those, they are putting forward these 27 for you to review tonight, as well as the seven possible locations to which these murals could be assigned. Tonight, we ask the City Council to take a look at the options for each location and determine if and which mural is to be installed, as well as determine a budget and allocate funds from the Public Art Trust Fund. We have also provided you with a brief...
Just to clarify, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
So of the locations that these are tied to, looking at this, you're asking us to choose one for each location?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you would still like to have a mural at that location, we know some of the locations were somewhat in question the first time this came around.
And if we're interrupting you at the beginning, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question?
Yes, please.
Where do the numbers come from that are listed here? Were they part of the RFP? How did we arrive at $40,000 for some, 20 for others?
I see. The budget numbers.
Correct.
So when the Cultural Arts Commission initially proposed this work plan item for review to City Council, they also proposed potential budgets, ranges of budgets, that could be assigned to the locations, based on the difficulty of the location. For example, if it's tough to reach, if you need to require scaffolding or lifts, things like that, the size of the location, the complexity. So those all went into consideration, and staff worked with the commission to provide those ranges. When City Council approved that item, they didn't specify which portion of the range to go with, so when the RFP went out, we went with that upper limit for the artists. If they wanted to propose a lower budget, they could, and some did, but it was up to that.
Thank you. Helpful.
All right. So without further ado, this is just a summary of the locations. As I mentioned, there are seven that were identified by the Cultural Arts Commission and that are up for discussion tonight. So the first location, these are in no particular order, we just numbered them randomly, is the Manhattan Beach Heights Complex, that front wall facing Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The first artist you're seeing here is Francesco Campanella. Francesco is from Los Angeles, his budget is $40,000, and this is an artwork inspired by the ocean.
That's good. I like that.
The next option, this was actually proposed for a different location, but the commission recommended it for this one. This is by Pamela Wall. Scott McCurdy also recommended for a different location, but commission recommended it here. And last, for the Heights location, is Armel Ver Van Gogh with this piece. A small note on this particular piece, it was submitted as a very, very, very long, skinny image, so here you're seeing it in three sections, because otherwise it would be just tiny.
Okay.
So discussion on this location. Would you like to go through all of the submissions first, or one location at a time?
No, one location at a time.
Well, are we going to discuss it before we open up to the public?
We can.
Okay.
Oh, well, he brings up a procedural point, though. Should we actually have public... Why don't you just take public comment?
Once you get supervising, the public comment.
So we're not going to take it one at a time?
Take it one at a time. But better get through. Are you done with the first section?
Correct.
So any public comment on the first section, location one? Anyone want to talk art? Anyone not applied, I meant. Anyone else? How about on Zoom?
We have Ann W.
Okay.
I want to say on Site One that I love Campanella and Go. Just great job, guys.
Great, thank you. Anyone else on location one?
No.
Okay. Close public comment, Council. Councilmember Polatano, then Councilmember Howorth.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do appreciate all the submittals for this one. I guess I lean towards either Pamela Wall or no NGO. I'm assuming that's the pronunciation. I'm sorry if it's wrong. But I like the vibrancy. I like the representation. Pamela Wall is a little, it's great, little simple compared to the other, and I like the inclusion of all the other ones and the no. So I probably, first choice is no, second choice, Wall. While I appreciate Campanella's, it really, I think it overdoes the theme of amoebic kind of things put together. It looks more like brains to me than a lot of other things, but those are my comments.
Okay, Councilmember Howorth, first and second choice?
Yeah, I just also want to comment that both Councilmember and Polatano's choices happen to volleyball players in them. I do, I really did love Campanella, although I think it may be better at a different location, but I'm not going to parse that out. I like, so that would be my number one and Go.
Which one?
Campanella.
Campanella one, all right.
And then Armel Ver Bialenio, no, for number two, or, you know.
Okay.
They're tied.
Thank you.
Oh, can I ask a quick question?
Are we doing ranked choice voting?
Yeah, I don't know.
Sounds like...
The three panels of the Go for staff, do they go on different places in the building? Like, they go ch, 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 or they...
So this one is tricky, again, because it wasn't proposed for this location. We're kind of massaging it a little bit. I think what might be easiest for the artist is if there were particular elements out of these panels that you could suggest are sort of must haves, then she could rework them into a composition that actually fits on the wall.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I really like it. Anyway, I'll let you go.
I kind of like the stack as it is.
She's the one, number one, and we'll come back with you on Aaron Down. Councilmember Lesser?
I share the views of Councilmember Polatano with either Wall or no. In addition to the reasons that Councilmember Apollo mentioned, I would add that it is, there are representations of what's going on in the building. It's a recreational center, and as a result, having some function on the outside in an artistic manner sort of suggests what's going on inside the building. So that's one of the reasons why I also like no and Wall, but probably lean towards no as well. But I am curious a little bit more if there's consensus on exactly how this design would fit on the building.
Got it. Mayor Joe Franklin, your choice.
Ah, yes, no. I mean, yes, no.
Yes on no.
No is one. Who's your second choice? On the sheet she handed out here, this one, this handout?
There's one before. Oh, I...
That might be easier.
Yeah, that might be a little bit easier. I'm just going to stick with no.
Okay.
All right.
And I'll make it official. While I also go with no as my first choice and Wall as the second, it's like no is far ahead. She has five votes. So now the question, where's our lean?
Alan.
Alan. So if the council majority voted on no as the location for the Heights Complex, do you want to know which of the three?
So you could pick one of those three panels, or you could pick some elements. Let's say you really wanted to incorporate the wave, but also the volleyball player, but you didn't care so much to incorporate the pier, for example. Then we could give that direction to the artist and ask her to compose a new rendering.
What's the vertical height of that space out there?
It's about 10-ish feet.
By 10-ish, by what?
By closer to 20, 30, what would you say, Mark?
Which wall is it? Which is it facing? Which direction?
It's the wall that faces Manhattan Beach Boulevard. But one thing to keep in mind, because of some planters that are there, as well as an awning or a roof, the topmost portion of the space is obscured, and the bottommost portion of the space is obscured. So if you literally stack them the way they are, I'm not sure how much would get cut off from the top and the bottom.
Got it. Councilwoman Lesser?
Just a process question. Does it make sense to ask the artist to present a rendering for fitting in this space, particularly given that this was originally prepared for location four?
The pier restroom. Yes, we can. Would you like us to come back with that rendering to Council?
I want to see what Councilmembers feel on that, just to try and get something more site-specific, given that it was originally designed for something else.
Sure.
Okay. And then, since we'll be giving the artist feedback, are there any elements specifically you'd like to include?
All of them.
I mean, I just like, yeah, and I, I think that when, that's a great idea. Ask the artist, show them the site. But I do what I really appreciate about the art, and I'm sure no matter what, he would, he or she would include it. The, sort of in that bottom panel, that the cut-out nature of the waves and the movement towards the right is really cool, if you ask. And I think skateboarding would be really cool to include, because that's sort of done a lot over there. But I don't really care.
So she has direction?
I mean, I don't, it's not, I don't want to say, I mean, I trust the artist.
Direction on that one.
More or less, we want to see the waves, we want to see the skateboarder. Any thoughts one way or the other on the pier? Because I know that one can be kind of...
It doesn't work. We have all, we have Wall as a backup, as our number two choice there.
So we will ask Armel to come back with a rendering and bring it before.
I don't think the pier, I don't think we have to have the pier there, because we have it so many other places.
Let her come back with what she says. Location two, you want to walk us through who they are?
Moving on, location two is the front facade of the Manhattan Beach Arts Center. For many of you who've been here for a while, this used to actually be the front door of when it was the library. So it is that sort of strange gray steel wall that faces Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The first artist is Charles Bragg. You saw him earlier today with these native parrots. The second choice is Miki, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, Mesures.
Mikey?
Who, his contribution to art, if you will, his, his style is to create these typewriters with messages that are catered to a location. So in this case, the message he's proposing is aspire to inspire others, and the universe will take note. The next proposal is from Selena Amaya, Amaya, excuse me, with these hearts. One thing to keep note on this proposal is she's not actually proposing this specific image. She's proposing to work with the community to gather images of hearts painted by community members, children, et cetera, that could then be assembled into either what she's calling a quilt pattern, which you're seeing here, or into the shape of a heart made out of hearts. And lastly, for this location, we have Jen LaVita with this very fiery sunset by the beach.
Councilwoman Howorth, first up with a question?
Yeah, I just have a question. Will the artwork on the top remain, the trim, if the black and white?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We did just finish restoring that, so yes, it will.
Great, that's great. That's awesome.
Okay, Council, who wants to go first on this one? I'm sorry. Any here in the public want to talk about this location number two? Anyone? Let's go to Zoom, online. Anyone talk about location number two? Close public comment. Council, Councilmember Polatano started us off.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, these, actually, I think most appropriate is the Mikey Mesures. I say that, but at $20,000, I question the real value of, is probably a stencil if he's done it elsewhere and throwing that together. I don't know if that's $20,000 worth of art there. I like the sentiment, though. I think it's appropriate for the building and what's inside of it. The Jen LaVita, I would love to see that somewhere else. I don't think it necessarily needs to be on that art center, but I think we should find another place for it. The hearts, I, again, appreciate it, but it's just a theme I've seen over and over by other folks that get community involvement. We're going to put hearts together and put it out there. The Bragg piece, I know he's here, so he's listening, I like it. Context, I kind of question, again, it's the art center. It certainly would draw interest and dialogue. So I'd go probably between Bragg and Mikey. But again, I think we should find a place for Jen LaVita as well, somewhere.
Got it. Councilmember Howorth, your top two.
Well, we also, Mikey Mesures said that other appropriate art center options include for the type or the text, "Dream bigger" or "Create every day," and making excuses does not count. So there's a couple other statements that he kind of put out there. I think I like that one because of...
Which one?
The Mikey Mesures is my number one.
That's your first choice, all right.
Because of where it fits, and it sort of kind of fits that space really well. You know, I sort of liked the art of the hearts and people coming together. I agree it's been done before. So I'm just going to stick with Mikey.
All right. Councilmember Lesser?
So my problem with this building is the city has now gone forward with the restoration of the John Van Hammershed relief at the top, and any work we pick beneath it needs to pair with it, which poses a bit of a challenge for some of these works. I may really like and think cool that Charles Bragg, and I know he is in the audience, I think it's really a wonderful work. But I'm thinking of that one, and then same with the hearts or whatever shape would come to mind, and trying to think how they would pair. What I like about the Jen LaVita, even though it wasn't originally intended for that space, is it would at least allow some color. It would also indicate place. It would indicate what's happening in the building, it's art. So it would be a relief and an alternative to what is now going to be kind of a monocholor, black and white, and some brick. So I might, in answer to the question which the mayor is looking for, just, you know, what's my ranking, I would consider the Jen LaVita, but I also would consider the Mikey Mesures with the understanding that it's just more monochromatic, and that's something that concerns me.
Got it. Mayor Joe Franklin?
Well, I think the parrots, if we could get one painted on Councilmember Polatano's shoulder, that would be permanently reminded of his status.
Arg, arg, arg.
Make him walk the plank for that joke.
Skellywag.
We'll sail on from that one. But it's, I love those parrots. I mean, that's one of the first things I saw when I came to Manhattan Beach, and it's just wild, crazy, but it's just, it's too busy for that, for that location. I like the hearts. I mean, and also how Selena said that she's going to go ahead and, you know, she's going to ask children and community members to draw a heart. And I know it's, it's been overdone, but I want to get the children involved. I would love, that's something that they could come back 10, 15, 20 years and say, that's my heart, and you're getting, you're getting people involved.
Got it. I'll make this even more confusing. I think the word art center, in my mind, I have something vibrant. I think Jen LaVita is there, and I also like Charles Bragg's whimsical parrot part of it. I think it's pretty funny. Because I don't want to say the same thing when I go to someplace. I want to look something different, and that sticks out as different. So my one and one A are Charles Bragg and Jen LaVita. If I can get Jen LaVita to move her art somewhere else, that's a question. What's the, what's the dimension of the wall here? Is it 10 something by 20 again?
Roughly, I'd say it's closer to a 10 by 15 or so. The other thing on this location to keep in mind is that there are those side windows, and if I back up on a couple of these renderings, you see those windows? So you can extend the artwork to go, the artwork can go within the windows, or it can engage those outside. So on Charles Bragg's piece, you can see that the artwork extends past it. So there's a little bit of flexibility on the space.
Okay, thank you. So Council, we are all across the board. Nothing here gets consensus on any, no piece has three votes with it. They're all two, two, two across the board.
We have one with three votes. The Mikey Mesures has...
I didn't vote. There's three for that one?
I'm tentative.
I would say that regarding those, sorry, I worry about, see, I still think that Jen LaVita would be better somewhere else. I worry about the windows. I think it would be too small if it was wedged between the windows, and then something would be lost with the palm trees and everything if it was expanded beyond the windows. I just don't think it really fits the space there well.
Understood.
You know, and taking that away, between Mikey Mesures, again, it's, it's a nice little gimmicky. It applies to the art that's inside. But if push came to shove, I'd pick Bragg over that.
All right.
Oh, okay.
Can I just ask a question, one more time? I'm trying to come up with maybe a consensus candidate here. Can you repeat again what the artist, Selena Amaya, is proposing, who presently has hearts that are shown? Her process, where she might end up, how she proposes to get there, and how this keeps this whole process on track in a time, a time-specific way?
So with, with Selena, yeah, it's, what she's proposing is reaching out to the community, either specifically to children, or possibly to just community at large, including children, and asking... and asking them all to paint, draw, create a heart. She would then collect all of those images together, presumably scan them in or some other digit, other way, digitize them, possibly color correct them so that there's a little bit more of a cohesive color palette. And out of those images, then create either a similar layout to what you're seeing there where it's a grid of squares. She calls it a quilt design, or it's a heart itself that's made out of little hearts. So one thing to keep in mind is the community members are not physically going to paint the hearts on the building. It will be that Selena, in this case, and possibly another artist working with her recreating the images that they solicited for.
So I love the idea of the community engagement, but I am concerned because as is evident by the even the representation here, there could be a clash with what's already going on in that space. So I'm not sure how to reconcile that.
Councilor Horwitz?
Thank you.
So art's very subjective, as you can see. I think there's going to be a clash no matter what, unless we get, you know, do something to match that. So along with the parrots. So I love the idea that the, you know, these were, he photographed this after, you know, his one man exhibit at the art center. That's very cool. And and we all do, you know, we have this thing about the parrots who will sometimes roost in the trees in my neighborhood, sometimes in Joe's neighborhood, so that's cool. For me, they're just, they're a little too big in this, like, it's it's just kind of big and busy for me. So I but I hear what people are saying, I I feel like Jen LaVita, it's it's out, it's gorgeous, but it feels not, it just feels too much for there. I think you guys were kind of saying no to Mikey. I think you were saying it's too gimmicky, and so if you're saying no to Mikey and you're focusing on Charles Bragg, I'm just wondering if it can be somehow, if it's not too busy, but if it, I can be wrong.
Parrots on a typewriter?
Parrots on a typewriter.
Is this how sausage is made?
It's a peen.
So you might, so I'll make a motion because we're going around around on three different walls.
Yeah, I don't know, it's all gorgeous.
Do I get to?
It's all gorgeous.
Okay, I just want to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to advocate again for Selena. You know, my my grandchild took art classes in the art center. There's a lot, you know, they have a lot of kid programming in there. And, you know, I just know that these kids, you've seen it all through elementary school and the middle school, they're just so creative. I mean, there's, you know, they'll they'll take the heart and they'll do all sorts of things. So I really want to encourage the younger people and to be able to drive by there or go in there. Imagine having your art, you know, your heart there while you're going in there to take a class or something like that. I just think it 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 adds depth to the meaning, you know, of the word art, is that it's from the community, from the heart. And these kids, I have no doubt, they'll do a great job, so I'm going to stick with Selena.
How does zebra?
I guess from from what we heard, though, there's just no guarantee that anyone's going to be able to recognize their own art in these things. That they could be miniaturized and do like the photographic collage of a lot of small hearts making up a big heart, right?
Correct. They're not necessarily going to be able to say, that's my heart, because they might have submitted a lime green heart, which really clashes with the building, and so the artist might have recolored it to be more toned down. So one thing, I don't know if this makes any difference, but there are two murals within walking distance of the art center that were community painted. Both the Leadership Manhattan Beach mural on the back of the parking lot was done by the community where a lot of children were involved and can say, I painted that leaf. Exactly.
I did, that was my leaf that you must be talking about, right?
That was my leaf, and nobody color corrected it. And then across the street at the Rainbow gazebo, again, many of you were there, so just.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilor Horwitz, which is?
I'm going to throw it out there. I'm going to suggest Mikey Messures. See if I get a second. Knowing that I'm good with a lot.
Seeing none? She's going to draw that motion, and then who else has a motion? Councilor Altona?
I would say that if there's not a majority or a consensus on this location, that we look for something else.
Yeah, okay.
We obviously can't come to consensus on on these choices. I hate to, as you say, kick the can down the road, but it's not so much kicking the can. I don't want to pick a piece just for the sake of picking a piece. We did that at the one decision I've lamented for.
We step on it everywhere, every day.
Last 32 years down at the pier with that tile mural. So I'd rather, again, I'd rather we can find something that really we we like and want out there as opposed to just doing one for the sake of doing one.
I concur. My fear is that it's a very unique situation, a tree in front and two windows on the side.
And the top.
It's tough.
And it's the art center.
So we're going to push off on this one and come back and find a better location for a better choice for this one? It's really difficult. Nothing against the artists, it's just, that's a tough, tough spot. So we've won location number three, we'll bring this one back with a better.
Clarification? Would you like for the commission to reconsider the 100 proposals that we have that are that have not been assigned? Or would you like to go out for a new RFP specifically for this location?
Reconsider the ones we already have.
And if I could add, tell them to really, I mean, and maybe they did, I should not assume that they didn't, but tell them to take into the John Van Hammerstedt.
The mural.
And and think about that, and maybe it's a style of art or colored or something. That's really important.
John?
John lives.
We'll come back with new options.
Councilor Altona, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's move to item, I'm sorry, location three. The Rocket Ship Hall Marine, and next time, Lynn, you could do it, bring this, what do you do, a write-up? Could you write this, dimension of the wall?
Will do.
We want to know the size so we know what it is.
Will do, noted.
Location three?
So this is Rocket Ship Hall. Again, we know this is a location used for recreation, oftentimes used by both kids and older adults. The first proposal is by Joanna Garell. This name might be familiar familiar to you because we did just approve a utility box for her. Also, she does have a mural with the butterflies right out here on the elevator shaft. So she's got a proposal with these surfboards, and on here you see two colorways. So one has this blue and one doesn't, one is more monochromatic. We've got John Gregory proposing, I believe the actual painting he's proposing would be more detailed than this. This is a sketch. We've got Drica Lobo, another local artist, and the piece on there on the door would say, you were meant to be here.
Somebody explain to me, $18,403.
Well, the plus the wave.
Before you rounded out in government, that's 20,000.
I know. 403.
We had some creative budgets.
Okay.
That's good, I like that.
I like it, he's coming under budget, always appreciated.
Councilor, your your button is pushed first, you go first?
Oh, well, I was, I didn't mean to push, that was from last time.
Councilmember Lesser?
I have for comment when, after public comment, if you want.
So public comment here, who wants to talk about location three? Anyone? Anyone online, talk about location three? Close public comment, Councilmember Lesser?
I like Joanna Garell's. I like how it sort of ties into the type of brick, cinder block that is already there and begin, pulls our community together in a sense. I like how it pulls in the West to the East Side in a sense, and it's a mural of of our, you know, our city icons and their pier, not the piers, but lifeguard towers on the in the East Side, it pulls the part of our community together.
Can we clarify on that one?
You've broken it in three different sets.
Yeah, is that the other walls that, or is it, what is it? Or is that for like the sidewalls? I I can't tell what.
I'm not sure why this proposal was submitted this way. This is presented exactly as the artist submitted it, and with so many proposals, we didn't have, it was too cumbersome to try to reach out to every single proposal to clarify things, so on this one.
The top part, right, it fits the dimension of the wall, although I don't know where because you have doors and you have a window there and whatever that metal thing is. So I just, I'm curious as to how this is going to play with everything else that's there.
So, yeah, the artist did not provide that detail, and I do believe that the bottom rendering, let me get to it, is just a colorway option of the top rendering. And I'm not sure why it was presented as two images like this.
Got it, so the addition of color.
Is this the west-facing wall?
Yes.
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 So, Councilmember, you're up, Joe.
Okay. This is Rocket Ship Park. I mean, you talk about generations going through a park, we were there with the toddlers and taking them on all the play structure, the original Rocket Ship, right?
I could see.
That you could go and go down that metal slide and burn your tush and, you know, it evokes a lot of memories. And then the kids graduated to to baseball, and there's that huge, wonderful baseball field. And then you have the the soccer field there. So I just don't, I mean, I just don't get the feel for, I I think I should recognize that, you know, because those kids are going there all the time. And and basketball, I forgot about the basketball courts there. So all throughout, you know, you know, a generation's life cycle, they've been at Rocket Ship Park. And and I I don't see images, I mean, we're going to have enough images of the ocean, you know, on the public art. But if we could, but I like Joanna's style out of all of them.
There's one.
Yeah.
And your second choice?
But if we could, and then the second one would be along the same way, but again, it has an ocean theme, is John Gregory. But I like, if we could just change it to evoking what's there.
There's one and two. Councilor Altona, yep, Steve?
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, I mean, this is the the problem with a theme, that you have a default theme of being a beach city that most people are going to submit artworks that are beach thematic. So, you know, of these choices, I mean, Lobo is kind of obvious, but they add the the writing there that that makes it a little bit different. I would go with either Lobo or Garell.
Okay. Councilor Horwitz?
Same, Lobo or Garell. And what I want to know, I mean, this could be a thing where you could reach out to the artists, like, let's say we go with Joanna, who's a little more representational with objects there. You know, maybe the artist would be willing to, okay, because maybe she might not have been thinking of this location specifically. Or maybe she she was, yeah, she was, sorry, she was. Because it would be great to see, you could see where the surfboards are, you could see it being Rocket Ship Park. You know, you could see that being the Rocket Ship, I mean, you know?
Right.
You could see it maybe, and I, but I hate to direct artists, so that's maybe, but I but I'm going with those two as well, Lobo and Garell.
All right. And I'll wrap up with Lobo and Garell myself. So I think we have a, stuck with her before. Councilor Lesser?
Just have one comment. I don't know if if this is even something to consider, but this certainly, this item, this, let me go back a step. Pamela Wall had a proposal that we looked at for number one, which originally was submitted for number six, which may not even work on this particular location. But nonetheless, to Mayor Patam Franklin's point, it has a little bit more athleticism in its renderings and its its media and what it's representing. And I don't know, I'm not sure if it would in fact work. I mean, obviously, it's a different color scheme than the cinder block brick, but.
It's kind of cool in a way.
And the skateboard.
But it could be interesting, I'm just wondering how we would proceed from here, and I just throw it out there.
Your recommendation is the one from prior location, number one?
The Pamela Wall piece.
From location one.
Yeah.
Maybe I could just ask staff whether staff believes that this would even work at that location.
Absolutely. I think in terms of the the layout and considering the fact that this was proposed for the PD fire station anyway, the the and I reached out to all of the artists to ask them if it was okay for us to essentially move, if you will, their proposal, and that was in the RFP as well. They were amenable with the consideration of height, so I'm sure that they would be amenable with this consideration as well.
If there were consensus on council, would process be that you'd reach out to the artist Pamela Wall and request a rendering specific to this location to see if, or what would you be recommending as an approach?
In the past, with mural projects, we've we've given the artist a little bit of freedom of saying, you know, okay, I'm going to go to the door or I'm going to go past the door. That will be up to the direction of council of exactly how precise you would like to be.
So I would amend my request, either Garell or perhaps Wall.
Okay.
Okay. Councilor Horwitz?
Yeah, I love, I like that idea, Councilmember Lesser. I actually, originally, I was, I looked Garell's using the similar color as a stone, like you mentioned. I kind of thought that was kind of cool, but actually, now I'm looking at Wall and the fact it has a skateboard. And the colors could actually be something that would enliven the area. So I actually would say that would be my number one choice for the area for location three.
Are you going to make a motion?
Sure. Pamela Wall from option one for location three.
Councilor Altona?
Agree.
And one thing, I'm I'm fine with it. The only question is, do you realize that the budget for that item is cut in half?
Or doubled?
Cut in half for location one.
Location one was four, right, it's doubled.
40,000, this is half.
Right.
So.
She may not.
As long as she unaware that the budget is half of what she bid on.
So I will reach out to the artists and see if they are interested in this location, knowing that the budget is lower and how they would lay out this design on the wall. In such an event that they are not interested in this, would you like to pick a second one, kind of a backup now, or come back?
I would amend my motion to say backup would be Joanna Garell.
Do you already fine with that?
That's fine.
Fine.
Do you have a preference on the colorway for Joanna, the monochromatic up top, or the addition of kind of teal blue at the bottom?
I'd do the color.
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 Wow.
Yeah, and then Pamela Wall, you know, this is also brick, it's a different surface than at the heights.
Correct, so we will ask her if she's able to work with that surface.
So next up, loca, I'm sorry.
Do you need us to vote or?
So again, it's it's Wall with a backup as Joanna, right?
Correct.
Joanna, it's color Joanna.
And location is number four.
Number four?
Location four is the pier restroom. I don't know size, but it's significant.
Correct, we did, we did not measure the sizes on on these, I apologize, but we will in the future so that there's better understanding. I do have to say that between the pier restroom location and the PD fire location, the vast majority applications of applications were for those two locations, so people were, it was very difficult to make a selection. So the first up for this location is Nora Martin Hall. She's from Los Angeles, and she's proposing this very ethereal sea kelp design to echo the ocean but still create a very restive and not too busy of an atmosphere for the space. The second proposal is Charles Bragg, whom I think we met today. And he is proposing, again, this very kind of effervescent view of pelicans that we know fly along the ocean with the building almost blending into the background. Next up, we have, I apologize for mispronouncing names, Reion by Seal. This is a very interesting proposal. It's tough to see on the slide right now, but the the design with the seals on the edge will be rendered to look like mosaic glass, like stained glass that you would see in a church window or something. Whereas the design on the long wall would be rendered more photorealistic, almost like a 3D popping out image. So it's kind of got two styles in one, and the ones on the long wall would call out the name of the species as an educational component. And then last but not least is Matthew Kavanaugh with this kind of happy view of life in Manhattan Beach.
Those are tough. Questions?
They all have the same budget, so that's easy.
I think it's great. Councilor Altona first?
Oh, I don't have questions, your honor, just waiting for.
And there's questions, anybody have questions?
No. Questions?
Questions?
No.
Then public comment on location four? Anyone? Charles, come down here and go to the podium, please.
Hi, and thanks again for serving our community, I really mean that. So I was at a meeting here, a city council meeting, and one of the council members, I don't remember, said they didn't want anything to be distracting on that wall. They even suggested not painting a mural on it. So I went there, checked out the wall, I thought the building was a distraction to the natural beauty of the place. So anyhow, keeping that in mind, though, not to be distracting, and it was a gray day, we get so many June glooms, May gray. So I was thinking of the horizon, the sand, the water, just subduing the colors but matching the colors of the sand as a as a base. No horizon line, just a very soft focus. And and then I just love watching the pelicans come in and do their thing with that squadron. You know, a few inches off the water, they, anyhow, that was my thought. Keep it simple, almost look right through the building to the to the sky and the water and the sand. And then the birds would be coming. I could imagine people riding their bike by or skating by and, you know, just spreading their wings to be a pelican as they go by that area. So anyhow, that was my thought process, and and there you have it.
Thank you, Charles, I appreciate that. Thank you, Charles, appreciate that. Anybody else? Anybody online? Patty? Location number four. Close public comment. Councilor Montana?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think there are two clear standouts here, and that's Martin Hall and Charles Bragg. Appreciate the explanation, but I don't, stop selling. I got it. Between the two, I would go with Bragg on this, I think that the rendering is very appropriate to the location. I think that, you know, I worry that too much will be a distraction, not just for the area or the building, but for some of the residents nearby, and so I like the, the pelicans coming, I think it's a nice rendering without being, it's understated, but very well done, and so I would favor Bragg.
All right. Councilor Malausser, you're up.
I request a little indulgence. I'm still questioning whether I would like any work there, and I need to explain why, even though I really do like Mr. Bragg's work and then see it for other proposals that are gonna be coming for council. Almost exactly 20 years ago, I sat, or I stood, rather, at that dais, making the case for my leadership Manhattan Beach class, do a mural on the side of the pier restrooms here. And the council at that time, which included a certain colleague, decided that that was not a good place for art, because it would distract from the pier. The thought was, you know, when you have such an iconic structure, do we want something else visually to take away from it? So, I appreciate the comments of our last speaker, who's presented a work of art that really does attempt to understate a contrary visual element there, but I would rather err in favor of not having something there than having a distraction for our iconic pier, and letting the ocean, letting the beach, letting the movement of the people in the cycle sort of speak for themselves. With that said, I think my first choice would be to do nothing, but I am certainly receptive to the work of Mr. Bragg.
All right.
Just to clarify at the time, we're just, we're trying to find a nice way to say we didn't like the proposal.
There's that.
Joe, you're up.
Okay, so, and same indulgence, I was the one that set up here, just because you have a wall doesn't mean you have to paint something on it. Hundreds of thousands of people come to visit the beach, you see them, but what's remarkable to me is I see people rolling their suitcases, they're like on a couple hour layover at LAX, and they, and they say to the taxi or Uber driver, drop me off at the pier, drop me off at the beach, I wanna see the beach. We all came here, we were attracted by the beach. I don't think I've seen any letters or comments to the council saying, hey, you gotta put something up on that wall. It's the beach, it is iconic, it is the most beautiful thing. Look, we all live here, there's a lot of places we could live in the world, and we live here. And a lot of people go down there a lot of the time, and it's uninterrupted, paint in your mind whatever you want on that white canvas. I also have issue with the maintenance of whatever we put up there, I got pictures here that I went down today and took a picture of the east, you know, the wall in the east, okay, so just directly opposite of the bathroom wall, and the paint is all chipped and faded, and I don't know the last time it was painted, okay? So, you're gonna be putting a lot of money into this, and it's gonna need a lot of maintenance, and you're gonna have to redo it, just because of its assault there. My number one choice is to do nothing.
Okay.
And I almost have to recuse myself from the pelicans, because I might have said it before here that, you know, I told my children and my grandchildren I'm coming back as a pelican, so be nice to them, because they're just wonderful creatures, I mean, when you, when you see them out there. So, I would, I would vote for nothing.
All right, Councilor Haworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the beach is iconic, I don't think the restroom wall is, I'm just gonna say it. And, you know, we live at the beach, we don't live at the restroom. I'm just, bless you all.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah, okay. But so, but having said that, no, but, but, having said that, I really do appreciate the reason behind those comments and the sentiment, and that, I mean, I think that Charles Bragg's image and mural is perfect for the reasons you said, I think the birds fly towards the pier. I think, you know, if you look at it, the, the sand of the ground in front of it is the beach itself, right, it's not, that's not part of the painting or the mural, and it leads to the ocean, to the horizon, so it really, it's seamless, and it's sort of, I think he said, it almost makes the building transparent. So, I, I think that's a clear winner for me.
All right. Councilor Montana?
Just to point out that we just celebrated the ribbon cutting of the, an art piece down at the beach, that is actually in the sand, which is the Catalina Classics sculpture. We also have, there's murals up at Dockweiler, there's murals, murals other places, the, the sea wall, the wall there at the pier, on either side has that tile mural, before that, it was a painted mural. So, there's been murals down there for many years. I appreciate the sentiment, but it's not without precedent that we have had artwork down at the pier.
Got it. I'll wrap it up here, and then you guys can make a motion. Could you go back, Patty, go back to the Ryan Basillo piece for a second for me?
I'm looking for the sidewall picture of that.
Oh, yeah, the stained glass?
Not that, not Matt Cavaney, the one before that, there. That is cool, I love that, but, and you realize we have an aquarium in the end of our pier, but I mean, I liked that part of it, but the uniqueness, because we have an aquarium in the end of our pier, I also liked Charles' pelican idea, to keep it nice, clean, and simple, don't clutter it up, that was my second choice, was Ryan Basillo's piece. So, with that, why don't you guys make a motion and move location four forward?
I move that for location, I made a motion.
There you go.
Excuse me, I make a motion that for location four, we approve the concept of Charles Bragg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Let's do a voting screen, please.
I'll take one for the team.
Appreciate you, Joe.
Yes, good call. Oops.
I'm not sure if I'm gonna be appreciated.
Motion passes four to one.
All right, thank you. Location five, Ellen.
We know who hates pelicans.
Better watch out when I come back.
I was talking about you.
All right, moving on to location number five, and speaking of pelicans...
There are more.
Here is a proposal, you're gonna be surprised, also from Charles Bragg, for another amazing pelican on the stairs leading down to the bike path. Another proposal also from Charles Bragg for a seal. We've got Daniel Shoykett with kind of an iconic zip code proposal, there's, it's shown in two colorways here, so if this is what you were interested in, you could pick out a colorway. And this is by the same artist that we were talking about earlier, Armel Verongno, with this jumping skater.
Councilor Malausser, start us off.
I have a question, and I recognize we haven't had a public comment yet, that is, there are five staircases, correct? And the proposal here is that we should select one artist to do all five?
So, this is a proposal for this specific staircase, I'm not sure how many spare cases there actually are, I haven't counted them.
So, why are there, is the number five listed in the...
It's location five.
That's just a location number.
So, this is just the one set of stairs?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'm off of 34th, I think.
So, I have comments as well, but I'll wait for, after public comment, to make my comments.
Questions only?
Yep.
No one has questions?
Yep.
You have a question?
Yes.
Making sure. Mayor Tom Franklin?
Exactly which stairwell is this? Which street?
I believe it's off of 34th Street. Let me look in the staff report really quick. I don't have that staff report, I believe it's off the 34th Street.
It's in the narrative, I think.
34th, okay. All right, that was my only question.
Okay.
Oh, and then just, how do you feel about the maintenance of this? It's gonna be stepped on all the time, and...
So, just for clarification, for this piece, it is only the vertical surface of the staircase that would be painted, so that you can only, if you were going down the stairs, you actually wouldn't see anything, you would just see concrete steps.
Just looking back.
But if you are facing the stairwell from the bottom, that's when the image reveals itself, and it is specifically that way for maintenance purposes, so between the sand and people stepping, it's more durable.
Okay, great. Got it, that's great.
Any more questions?
Nope.
Councilor Montana, Steve, question?
No questions.
Councilor Haworth, question?
Comments?
Got it. Public comment? Anyone about location number five? No? Public comment number five?
Hi, I just, so, respect for Charles Bragg, and those are great ideas, and also Shoykett, love it.
Great, thank you. Charles Bragg Fan Club, I appreciate that. Else?
We also have Rita Crabtree Compa.
Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to just say, sorry, respectfully, honorable Mayor, Mayor Portman, everybody, and artists, I just wanted to respectfully say that I think that the question about maintenance was an interesting one for me, one for me about the stairs, and my second comment was, well, I love, everybody's artwork is, the skateboarding concerns me, because I just thought, when I looked at it immediately, I thought, oh, shoot, is that gonna draw the attention of skateboarders, like, going up and down these stairs? Though while the art is beautiful, it's not my first choice, and the other more serene seal, the, not, not seal, sea lion, I really appreciate, so, just those two comments, thank you, I appreciate everybody's work, and this is really amazing, thanks.
Thank you. Our next comment?
No further speakers.
Close public comment. Ellen, just a question for clarify, the maintenance question, I thought you said before, there's no maintenance on the top step.
Correct, the top step will not be addressed or touched in any way, so the mural is only on the vertical surface of the step, which, like any other mural, will eventually require some touch up and some maintenance, possibly slightly more, if someone's kicking maybe that step as they're walking, and it is in the very close proximity to the ocean and sand, so it's possible.
No one stepping on the art, is that what you're looking for?
Correct, nobody stepping on the art.
Got it. Councilor Malausser?
I just was gonna follow up on your question without saying a comment, I just wanted to better understand if staff knows, even though the artist is here, what the estimated useful life, expected life would be for these, because I'm imagining with the application, they could begin to peel, particularly as people even step on the stairs, it would begin to peel off. What's the estimated lifespan for this application?
Thank you. So, we are asking the artists to use appropriate paint, appropriate materials for these locations, these are, this is outdoor paint that should be adhering really well, and at worst, it should be eventually fading, although I suppose peeling is possible. In the contract, I do believe we specify a minimum of a five year warranty during which time the artist will repair it, after that, it would just be under the city's purview to maintain it. That said, there's murals that have lasted tens, dozens, hundreds of years, so paint can be pretty resilient.
For another day, we should have a discussion on the maintenance plan and retirement plans of all, thank you.
Save that one, your mayor. Follow up question, my curb was painted, and my curb lasted seven years before it faded, there's an idea, and no one steps on my curb either, so, there you go, no one, we step in on the art, they step above the art, they don't step on the art, so no more maintenance questions for that one, we got it, figured it out now. Okay, Councilor Paul Tom?
So, one question, though, and then my comment is, like any other outdoor mural, though, these days, is it going to be covered with the graffiti, anti-graffiti clear coat?
So, I, actually, thank you for bringing that up. In the RFP, we did require the artists to put on an anti-graffiti coat, graffiti coating onto all of the artworks, especially since we know the city council typically requested. One thought did come up at the Cultural Arts Commission meeting, that there is some evidence that in certain environments, the graffiti coating begins to turn whitish and milky faster than the paint begins to discolor. So, at this point, our plan is to proceed forward with the anti-graffiti coating, but that's just something that we wanted city council to know.
Yeah, I worked on that before, like, down Dockweiler, County Beach, and it's been fine, so, it might be brand specific, I don't know.
So, could be, and we will make sure to research the brand that's best recommended.
Okay, so, looking at these, I think we've covered pelicans, so I'm gonna take that one out of contention. The 90266, I appreciate the sentiment, but it's kind of seizure inducing to me. No, again, I think the most appropriate, and frankly, the one that works the best, and I think that will be appreciated by the public, is the sea lion.
Okay. Councilor Haworth?
Yeah, I mean, golly gee, and I, I think that, I think Ms. Compa brought up with the skateboard art, you know, it's not a reflection on the artist or the piece of art, but I think it would be an attractive nuisance for skateboarders, bless their hearts. The Shoykett piece, I, I kinda love it, but also, it is on stairs, and I think it could be a potential safety hazard for people with eyesight such as mine. But I sort of love the concept and the fact it's very different than other stuff we've seen, so, but I just think it is, and if we were going to do it, I'd want the colors to be a little more, kind of, from our logo or something, sorry, very commercial art. So, I would agree that the sea lion is probably number one for me, Shoykett's number two, if we could work with the colors.
Okay. Mayor Tom Franklin?
Yes, thank you. I'm also gonna go for the sea lion.
Okay. Councilor Malausser?
I very much like Mr. Bragg's work, I like the sea lions as well, but now we're having this large commission on the pier restrooms as well, any issues with picking one artist to do prominent locations by our coast?
Your pick?
I just raised a question.
You pick one?
I like Mr. Bragg's sea lion.
Okay. I'll wrap up here for the motions made by Councilor Haworth. Just a reminder, as Ellen said, the skateboard, they can't be seen unless you're below the stairs, you can't see it from above, you can't see it when you're on the stairs, so I don't know how that would do anyone to skateboard more in our city, as long as you can't see it till you're actually at the bottom of the stairs. But that being said, since my colleagues don't wanna go there, I'm fine with the sea lion being our step, so I like the creativity of Daniel Shoykett, too, having 90266, pretty cool. So, my number one is the sea lion and Shoykett, number two. Councilor Haworth has a motion.
Yeah, and again, with appreciation to all the artists, I move that we approve the Charles Bragg sea lion for location number five.
Second, my Councilor Montana. No other questions? Roll a voting screen, please.
Motion passes five zero.
There we go. Location number six, which is the PD Firewall, see, she's laying Hugh Johnson away in here. Size of this wall, we don't know, but it's large.
Correct, the large, flat wall. So, the first recommendation comes from artist Alex Weinstein, who's actually also in the audience with us. He lived and worked in Manhattan Beach for many, many years, now lives in Redondo, so very local. We've also had an exhibition of his work, and this piece is titled "Hope," and is really meant to bring together and be sensitive to the memorial that's across the street, as well as the 911 memorial there, and bring a sense of serenity to the, to the space. The next possibility is Eric Snyder, the commission just really enjoyed the 3D effect of this proposal. Next one is Emily Tanaka with Falcon, this piece is actually currently, the original piece from this is currently at the Art Center, if you wanted to see it. And then, the last proposal is by artist Dana Torrey with this rescue of St. Bernard.
Wow. No calls to rescue St. Bernard to Ruthen, all right, I got that. So, questions first, anyone? Seeing none, public comment on location number six, the PD Firewall? Public comment on location number six, the PD firewall? Please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alex Weinstein. And, yeah, the, where I'm coming from with that particular painting, I make a lot of paintings that are, you know, based on images of the horizon and the sort of transcendent potential, the sublime potential of a work of art, is something that I've been sort of exploring for almost 30 years. I chose that location very specifically. The painting is really dedicated, specific to that site because of its proximity to the 9/11 memorial, which I think is super-powerful, and I think it was a really bold move on the part of the city to erect that. I think it's very, it's very, it's obviously a sad moment, and it's a, it's a very touching nerve for the whole country. It's a real wound. So what I aspire to do with that particular painting is a kind of palliative measure that takes its inspiration from the, you know, the ocean and the sky and the horizon, because when people look to the horizon, especially in California, they see, they have the entire country at their back, and they have the endless potential of what could be coming next, their own potential, the potential of other generations. It's deeply inspiring, and that's what our entire community is nestled around. So I really wanted to bring a kind of, not totally, you know, accurate rendition, it's not a photo-realist type of painting, but it should bring that. It's like, here's a painting that can actually move you, just the way that the horizon can move you. And I liked it as, again, like a sort of palliative, or something that goes with the seriousness of that particular site, that's a site that's deeply loaded in political and moral and emotion, and emotional depth and magnitude. So, that's sort of where I'm coming from, is, and also, I make a lot of other work that sort of speaks to that, so it's consistent with what I do, and that's my profession, I just make art for a living, so. Just wanted to try to address where I was, you know, my point of view. I'm very nervous. Sorry.
We appreciate that background, thank you very much.
Have a good time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your consideration.
Of course. Anybody online, Patty? Okay.
Hello, I'm Anne. And Alex is my, was my art teacher. So many great choices here. I wanted to just champion the Alex Weinstein painting, "Hope." And, you know, I went to the 9/11 memorial on September 11th, and I thought about the proposals, because I wanted to just say a prayer, have a moment. And the thing about his work is that you can enjoy this beautiful fade from sky to ocean for its own sake. And we've all seen days like that. But it also acknowledges and reflects on the tragedy of that day, and is only like 20 paces away from the memorial. But if you're aware of 9/11 memorial, it also references that with dignity and respect. So, it's a depiction of sky and water, and with sky and water. And then I think of that as like, water for the firemen to use in saving lives. So that makes sense to me. But it's also like a peaceful image for them to come home to after they answer our crazy and critical 9/11, 911 calls. So, I don't know, you know, we don't have cornfields, we don't have forests, our natural resources are sky, and clouds, and ocean, and I love all the wildlife, volleyball, and sports. We are a sports powerhouse, but we, as a community, are so many things, we have so many sides and strengths. And so, to me, if we included Weinstein in our collection of murals, it just shows our humanity, our heart and our soul, and that we, you know, bow our heads at the appropriate time, we're a multifaceted, caring community. And, what's a pirate's favorite letter?
Arr.
They love the sea, they love the sea.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Thank you.
Pirate quiz night tonight. Anyone else? Patty?
We also have Rita Crabtree Compa.
Yes, good evening, and I, I just wanted to give a plug for the Weinstein, 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 I apologize if I'm saying that wrong. Artwork, the serenity and the peacefulness of it, and, yeah, I just, I just feel like that is, the previous speaker said it all, I just think, coming back to a quiet moment, a respectful moment, and a peaceful moment, just says a lot for our city. We have other places where we have all the sports and the activities and the animals, et cetera, and this is just a place for respite. So, I appreciate this art, I appreciate all of the artists. They're all beautiful, the submissions are amazing, but this is the one that speaks to me for this, for this place. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
No further speakers.
Anyone else here in the audience? Close public comment, then? Counsel, we'll start with Councilor Paul Tano.
Thank you, Your Honor. And, you know, I appreciate the words that have been said and the sentiments, but, you know, with that said, the, we have a great 9/11 memorial out in front of, on the corner there, by the fire station. I'm not really looking to make more memorials. We've got a great one already, we don't need a second one, you know, the reflective moment, all those things. I just have a problem sometimes when you, a lot of words need to be used to explain or describe an artwork. You know, the fade I've seen in many places, from sky to sea, it just, I've seen it before, it doesn't, doesn't speak to me the same way it's spoken to others. Emily Tanaka's, I just don't see the context there. Dana Torrey, well, Price Tag is nice, but I, it's a bit of whimsy. I'm not sure that the St. Bernard, you know, in terms of whimsy or impact, I think the visual, the visual of the shark coming out of the, I mean, none of these are super, I think, appropriate to the location. If I was gonna pick one, I'd pick the shark, just for something different, something that, when people walk by, because we wanna give the firefighters something to look at, but they're coming in and out of the garage there. They're not gonna be standing out looking at the wall. But people passing by, going down 15th Street, going down Valley, going down Ardmore, are going to see this painting, and it's a high visual impact area. And for the, biggest bang for the buck, I see the Eric Snyder piece.
Thank you. Before you go on, just the one you mentioned, the Jen LaVita piece, to look at, or not?
Which one?
The Jen LaVita piece you mentioned in location two.
Yeah, the.
Is the wall you talked about, is it possible relocation, or is that something else?
More from Art Center, this one.
Yeah? That's possible?
Think about that for a second. Mayor Tim Franklin, you're up.
Okay. Thank you all for description of your artwork and the like. I, I went back and I looked at the Jen LaVita one, and it was originally proposed for this location. And that wall is interesting, and this artwork is interesting, because in the morning, sometimes you got a beautiful sunrise over the fire station. If you're at that particular spot in the upper picture here, you know, in the parking lot, and you're looking east over the, over that wall, you see this beautiful sunrise. And that evokes a lot of, you know, good thoughts and the like. Here's your new day, here's your fresh day. So, that, that's what I see in the Jen LaVita artwork there, so I'd like to somehow consider bringing this over to, you know, back over to the police station. It just, it just hits me, because I have, you know, several photos of the sunrise over, you know, the, the fire and police station, so.
Okay. Councilor Horwath?
Thank you. I've actually changed my mind a number of times over the last few days on this. I actually got a kick out of the Dana Torrey piece, because it is whimsical, and I have a big dog, although I think I would want it to be a dalmatian, just to be completely whimsical. But I have to say that the Alex Weinstein piece, for me, I'm not too hung up, or it didn't necessarily, even though I know his description of it and others' description of it relating to 9/11, I get that. But I, what I really think is that it's this piece of art, that you can get a lot of different feelings or meanings from and of. And I think it looks very clean and modern there. You know, I, I don't know, maybe the firefighters would like to see the fire truck, maybe, you know, I don't know, but I, I'm going for the Weinstein. I think the shark is hilarious, but I think it's a little, not hilariously done, it's very artistically done. But, I don't know, it seems too funny, too, too funny there. So I like the Alex Weinstein, number one, and number two is Torrey.
All right. Councilor Lesser?
I'm really challenged by the space. I like all of these pieces, but as has been stated, that we have to recognize the work of art that is already there is quite powerful, juxtaposed with the day-to-day work of firefighters that are, their activities are prospective in nature, beyond remembering those that have been lost and recognizing the risk of what they do every day. It's looking forward. And for that reason, I'm, I also am touched by the Weinstein, but I'm looking at something maybe more optimistic, that would not, that somehow could pair with the 9/11 memorial, that's different, that's optimistic. Emily Tanaka's work with the paragon, I just like the color, but I'm not sure if I would want any of these necessarily at that location. I'm really torn with whether it should be anything there, because I agree with the comment that Councilmember Paul Tano made earlier, and that is, we shouldn't just put art at a location because we have this opportunity to move forward, we really wanna be focusing on the specific work, and whether it's the right piece, lest we regret it, is it 30 years later?
All right, bring back the Leadership of Manhattan Beach. Get back.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm really torn here, I.
You wanna not, you wanna suggest not to put any of these pieces?
I think that's, I think that's, that's an option, or as a second, Tanaka.
Okay. With that said, and there's good comments back and forth, you know, Franklin, are you gonna make a motion, or Paul, about your suggestion? We did with the wall piece earlier?
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to, to go along with Councilmember Lesser.
So no, nothing?
Yeah, nothing.
All right, so.
Yeah.
Councilor Paul Tano?
I'm fine with it.
You, nothing of this wall? Nothing of these?
For now.
You know, like I said, if I, when you say, well, it's too much or too funny, I guess you're saying it's too odd to have a shark on the side of a, I mean, to me, it's a location. I think that it would be looked at favorably, the shark, I think that it's just, like you said, it's out of place, out of context, it's 3D-looking, so I think that's something that can generate dialogue.
That's true.
I would still go with Snyder, but if the consensus is to do nothing, or find something else. I mean, is the idea to do nothing because we don't want anything there, or is the idea to do nothing because we don't think any of these really fit the location?
Go ahead. Sorry. Personally, I wouldn't want to do nothing there, ever. I'd be open to something there. I hear what you're saying about the dialogue for Snyder, so I would give it my second vote, I could move towards that. You know, and I also want to remember, it's the fire station bay, but it's also police and fire, right? And so, there's something also about the blue of Alex Weinstein's, which no one else seems to have voted for, but that reminds me of that. So.
I'm just, I'm drawn, I'm drawn to the shark, NATO.
That is so you. You are such, so, but why don't, why don't we wait, Mr. Mayor? If there's not, if there's not consensus, why don't we?
I'm not looking for consensus, I'm looking for three votes, wanna put something up, or vote nothing up there.
Oh, I love that, okay.
Let's go nothing.
We haven't had a consensus, any vote tonight.
We can bring it.
And make a motion.
So, what's your motion?
My motion is that we don't choose any of these tonight, that we're open in the future to another piece of art.
Okay, you have a counsel, second, my Councilor Lesser, any comments?
Any further process? Just to clarify.
I think you, I'm gonna give direction to staff, you want them to bring back other suggestions for the wall? As part of this motion, or you just make it no, period, nothing on the wall?
I'm not saying no period, nothing on the wall, I thought I was clear on that. I don't know that you have to, like, maybe you come back with other things you have, or maybe it's in a different year, I'm not.
Like the other location, I'm in favor of doing something.
Okay, so let's.
If we're not in favor of doing this, I don't wanna wait again for another.
Okay. So bring some stuff back, other proposals, other stuff.
And my second remains for that.
Okay, great.
Voting screen, please. All right, folks, we have.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We have one more to go, location seven. This is the parking lot number two. If you don't know what that is, it goes a slant from east to west.
Yeah, so this location is a little bit tricky, because it does have that slope where it's a bit difficult to, if you needed to erect scaffolding or other things, that's why it's got a similar budget to other locations that are larger. This one's a bit tricky to access. So the first artist here, we have Dave Titus, who is proposing a trompe l'oeil rendition of an under-the-pier scene with kind of a, another pelican, we've got a pelican theme, sitting up top, but also ocean life swimming in between the pier pylons. We've got Scott McCurdy with a very whimsical, fun wave, and the surfboard kind of shooting out, and a volleyball bouncing off. This is a proposal by Taylor Gardner. One comment on this, I had a conversation with Mr. Gardner earlier yesterday, and he would like to amend both the image to this proposal and the budget to this proposal. And also, he confirmed that he's never done a mural before, so.
The budget's gonna go down?
No, he would like to, to request the $20,000 budget and a different, well, it's a more completed version of this image. And then, Drika Lobo, we saw her art earlier with this sort of sunrise with palm trees.
Awesome. Any questions?
Question on the, which one is it, the Gardner piece? I guess I'm not, they're gonna, they wanna redo the image, I guess I don't understand the shape, the white shape around the, at the bottom of the face, is that it?
Right, so.
And a headband?
An incomplete painting in progress, and so, since this was submitted, the artist has worked on the painting more. So now, more of the white shapes are filled in. And at the bottom there, you see a digital rendition of a similar painting that the artist is envisioning.
That's taken from a photograph.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so I think the one on the bottom, Photoshop or whatever, to adjust it to those triangles, and then the one up at the top is, physically, it's a painting on canvas, kind of medium-scale painting on canvas.
All right, that's, that's all I need. I'm good. All right, thank you, Your Honor.
You have that. Mayor Franklin, you have a question?
Yes, so with Dave Titus, can, can we request, or does it have already the species that are local to, to our waters?
I believe those are local, and I'm sure we could request specific ones, or at a minimum stipulate that they would be local.
Okay, thank you.
We have manta rays off the.
Anybody else have questions? All right. Does any in the audience have a question or comment about location number seven, parking lot? Seeing none? Online?
We have Dave Titus.
All right, Dave?
Yeah, I can answer that question for you. I can definitely adopt this to include the animals that, you know, are specific to the area. And I just wanted to say thanks for even, thanks for considering my design, and I just think it's the perfect concept to fit into this space, and you probably understand that this, this sketch is just, is really a concept sketch, you know, and I need time to put together the final image before I can transfer it to the wall, et cetera. So, anything else you need to know, I'm here.
Thank you, Dave. Stand by. Anyone else online?
We have Anne W. again.
Okay.
Hey, I would say, great job, everyone, and just really love what you did with it, McCurdy. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else online, Patty?
No further speakers.
All right. All right, so no one else here, close public comment, council, we'll start with Mayor Tim Franklin, and then Napolitano, and then Hoarth.
So, I really liked the Dave Titus, I thought it was very original and clever, that's a very problematic, it's not even a wall, I mean, it's part of a wall. And it, and how many times have we gone into the water, you know, around a pier, whatever, and there's things swimming around, and it's just very, very clever. I asked a question about the local species, because any kids that see this could be going to the aquarium, or could be coming back from the aquarium, it reinforces the wildlife in the ocean that we need to protect and see, and I just see kids and families bopping on down the hill, going to the beach, and talking about it, I mean, I think they would get very, very excited about it, so that's the one I would vote for.
All right. Councilman Paul Tano?
Titus, my first choice, McCurdy is my second.
All right. Councilman Hoarth?
Titus.
All right, Councilwoman Lesser?
I love the movement of Taylor. I love the movement of the Taylor Gardner piece, particularly with even the incomplete image, which leaves more to the imagination, I love the colors of the Lobo. I initially was passing over it, but there's something fun about the McCurdy, just that it's sort of whimsical, so I would go either McCurdy or Titus, which of course is really much more conceptual and really clever and ties into our theme.
Councilman Hoarth?
I was going to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the Dave Titus concept for location number seven, and I especially appreciate what Councilmember, or Mayor for Tim Franklin said, that will be a destination for the kids to walk by, oh mom, let's walk by that, you know, can we please walk by that, can we try going in, you know, it's, I love the trompe l'oeil concept, so, but I do appreciate the art, I mean, this is really fun to get to choose between all of these, and so, that's it.
Great. Motion by Councilman Hoarth, the second by Mayor Tim Franklin, voting screen, please.
And I noticed it's got a pelican.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
But no pirate. Thank you, staff, you have direction on the missing pieces, so bring it back soon as you can, and we'll go from there.
We'll pivot.
Thank you. With that, we move to item L, city council requests and reports, including, are you told there are four reports, anybody travel anywhere the last two weeks? You guys go anywhere? Joe, in classes? I went to the contract cities fall conference down in San Diego, and for once, they had the sheriffs and the supervisors from LA County there.
Oh, wow.
So, may Chief Goodlove this, Chief Johnson, their two biggest, and most hurt items were consent decrees, no bail, jail depopulation, oh my, and three, the assistant sheriff, deputy sheriff, LA County was there, talked about the impact of what they're seeing all across following the no-bail decrees, what they, what they see, what they expect going down, and she's from Bell, our Bell Gardens, and I think it was Gardena and somebody else, they're talking about what they're seeing, what it means to them, we're all following what you put out about the no-bail, what it means, every city in LA County is trying to juggle what's going to happen, what they're going to do, it's brand new to all of us, until the rest of the people there, all elected, got to hear that game plan going forward. And most, the second to that, most attended part of this conference was street vending community, and talks about what each city does to enforce street vending, and what we can, when, and what we cannot do for street vending, and one of the things I learned about this is that the roll-up carts that have fixed items to it are not legal anywhere in LA County, the health department made it clear, they can't just roll up a cart and sell hot dogs, they have to have fixed items to it, and it has to be a fixed location, or it doesn't comply with LA County standards, and everybody's writing down notes, and I have the file for it, just want to read it. But really informed to learn, we finally get to clear direction from the county about what they see, and what we're being, when it first out, the state law came out, there's definitely a difference, disconnect between what we were told from the state, and what LA County Health Department is telling us, what we can and cannot do, that was a highlight of it, so, I'm glad we went, and free registration, because of ICA, they waived their fees for me, which I thought was very nice of them. So, that's my report, move on to item number 20, consider request by Councilmember Hoarth, Councilwoman Lesser, to discuss adding the camilla, camilla as a second city flower. City Manager Ramon?
Yes, originally, this is coming back as a third vote, to see if you want to go forward, but depending on what direction you give us tonight, if there's minimal cost involved, we can discuss it and take action.
And if I could just give a little bit of color, or, you know, to the, why I brought it?
Very basic, yes.
Very basic, I know, I'm not going to try to sway anybody, I'm not saying this as replacing the beach primrose or an official flower, but I think there's, it's a way to honor the Yamato family, and also to acknowledge that Manhattan Beach, you know, the camilla spread wide throughout Southern California, it's a big part of, you know, the flora of the region, and it really had its roots here in Manhattan Beach, so that's why I would like to bring it forward, I don't expect it to be something that, you know, we have a festival every year, or a new city pin, but I think it'd be a really nice educational feel-good opportunity.
No wall mural?
You know, who knows, maybe with a pelican, I mean, I feel like it could be in the beak of the pelican.
Pelican and pirate.
I pity the poor pelican, his beak can hold more than his belly can, all right.
You have a third, move it forward.
Do I have a third? I have a third, thank you, Joe.
Mayor Franklin fell for the camilla art trick.
It's just, it's not, okay, thank you, so, staff...
You have a third.
It's not going to cost any money, that's what I heard.
So, what that means, we won't need a third step, then?
Okay.
Three of you decided it's going to be?
On the agenda.
No, you won't need any further report?
No, 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 no.
It's just now the second official flower?
I know, but if there's no, oh, you want to have another council meeting on this? Okay.
I would like to bring it to an agenda with what, what it would mean, and...
I'd like to see an...
Yeah.
MB Weekly poll.
That's a joke, that's a joke, but, okay, but thank you.
I have a serious request, and that is just a little bit more history there, I would welcome just some more context of it, consistent with what Councilmember has, Hoarth has described.
And I'm happy to share what I have, the staff.
That's great.
That's all for item 20, right, we're good?
I have another future agenda.
That's the next item.
Sorry.
Item M, futures of items, Councilwoman Lesser, and then Councilman Hoarth.
This last week, all of council and city staff inaugurated the new park course, the new exercise equipment on the strand, it looks terrific, thank you to the 10K committee that helped pay for the original equipment, as well as for the replacement, but it calls into question the exercise equipment that is on the Veterans Parkway, something that four members on this council previously studied back in 2019, apparently there are issues with ADA access, as well as budget, I'd like to propose that it come to a future agenda, so we can talk about it.
I'll support that.
I will, too, I never have understood the cost of the ground, it's not that when we have decomposed granite down at the strand, why it can't be the same.
I agree, I agree, I think there's money there, I think we've already received some funds from the Beach Cities Health District, and the current equipment there is really pretty well degraded.
So, City Attorney Barrett, we have three?
Great four, actually.
So, you're good?
Thank you.
Future agenda for the second step, thank you.
Councilman Hoarth, your item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, I would like to put on a future agenda item, let's see, November 12 through the 18th is Stand Up Against Hate Week, and last year, we did, well, the city did a sweet little event at Polywog around Rainbow gazebo, there was chalk painting, a drum circle, and we did an official proclamation, Stand Up Against Hate, and I think it's a great thing to do, and I'd like to put it on the future agenda to do it again.
Who's your second?
Are we going to run out of time to...
So, we have to, it would have to come up, like, the next meeting, and staff, I know staff, staff has talked to me, they have ideas they would like to pursue for it, so I would like those ideas to come to us, like, the next meeting, so, we can approve or not.
I mean, procedurally, can it come back at the next meeting?
Oh.
I don't think it's going to take that much time, but I defer to Bruce.
And budget.
Yeah, I, depending on the scope you're looking for, if it doesn't take much time, we can certainly discuss it this next...
Well, and like I say, staff has, you know, been looking for direction, and I think that they could come to us and say, this is what, it's not, this is what we have planned.
Sure, and I think some of what we're looking for here also is, you know, we're adding another event that we're sponsoring, and so, it's added to the list that keeps growing, and we just want to make sure it's a priority for the council to spend staff resources on that.
I mean, I don't know how much, I wasn't on the council before, so I don't know how much it costs, but procedurally, if we get another vote, can we come back, can it come back, and, you know, if it was going to be a $50,000 event, I would not probably want to approve that.
I guess I want to understand what you're looking for staff time-wise, and...
Right now, I'm looking for staff time to come back and say, here's what we want, and here's the proclamation that we want the council to sign, and, you know, would be akin to what we did before, perhaps, or maybe lower, less, so...
So, I would say that exceeds the typical four hours that we would do, that would require council approval to...
It's probably a little more than four hours.
Yes.
But not a ton of time.
Okay, so, at the next meeting, we would have the third vote, at which time you could give us direction?
It feels like we would run, I feel like I would need, I mean, I don't have, I'm not sitting here saying, let's do this, let's do a parade and paint the town pink, but I would like staff to say, okay, what I'm proposing right now, because of time, you know, it's like a little over a month away, month and a half, Steve, did you want to?
Go ahead, finish your comment.
No, finish, go ahead.
I would like, I would like you to come, I'd like staff to prepare a report for, if there's two votes, to come back and say, here's what we want to do, and we want a proclamation, and we want to do these events, because otherwise, if we have to make it a three-step process, we're going to run out of time.
Let's start with Mayor Franklin, then Napolitano, then Lesser. Joe?
Oh, talking about that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Were you, you had another agenda?
Yeah, I had another.
Put your name out there, Steve?
Well, I mean, the city manager brings up an interesting point, it's, right, I think, I'm going to, not going too far out on a limb to assume that we're all against hate, and I do have concern that we're going to just have event, because the peace event, other things happening, that we're going to have just things added to the calendar, staff time for all these things, which take away the focus from the things that we do yearly, I mean, for something like this, it seems that having a booth at the Hometown Fair is more effective than having an event where 20 people show up. You know, like you said, you're not looking for parade, not looking for, so I don't know what we're looking for, if it's just an opportunity to hand out signs and things like that, again, the Hometown Fair is more appropriate to hit more people with that, you actually get more eyeballs on it, rather than having staff time, rather than putting together an event that, you know, I don't know what it would involve, with poetry reading, which, I say it not in jest, this is what happened last time, right, some young people speak and everything like that, that it seems, you know, those things are maybe better tied into other events that we already have, that we can have the participation of folks, and, or even, you know, do a video, rather than skip the event and have an anti-hate video, and, you know, get your signs or something like that.
I absolutely love that idea.
So, there are alternatives, I, you know, at a certain point, because my guess is just thinking forward, if we do this on a yearly basis, it will get a diminished return, rather than building over the years, because it's just like, okay, that's, we do that every year, I'm going to skip it this year, I guess I just don't see it as an event, more as a message that we want to...
A value that we...
Yeah.
Could I, before you speak, could I, because I, you're bringing up some, you know, great points, and I think that, to me, it might be more important that we, let's say something comes up that we want to respond to, and we could spend resources that way, you know, separate from, different from this, right, like, think what you're, like, rather than just having this event, to have this event, since I don't know what I'm, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, this week is coming up, we should at least do a proclamation.
I think a proclamation's no problem, we put, like, tonight's proclamation, we can put one on there.
I think we need to do a proclamation, and maybe we do it as a ceremonial, maybe there's something a little more to it, that's up to the mayor.
Defer to you and the mayor.
Go ahead, David.
Well, I want to respond to what your request is, and if it is to do something where we're supporting an event, and maybe on a streamlined basis, at least this first year, that is something maybe that could be proposed, and let me, I was going to ask staff if that's something that could happen this year, I thought Councilmember Napolitano was helpful in our discussion about a Juneteenth celebration, where initially, we were thinking about putting something together this year, and he thought that, and rightfully so, and we all agreed, that this year really should go out to the community for a larger discussion, and to not just rush to do something for the sake of doing it, but to have some thought behind it. Same sort of thought comes to mind here, that to the extent there needs to be some acknowledgement, and we don't have enough time, at a minimum, maybe this, the request is, and you tell, and I'll leave it to you to ask staff, what needs to come back for direction in this short period of time?
And what I would say to come back for direction, if anything, because I'm really hearing y'all, and it is, it would be something that would be from staff, that would say, this is, if they want to do something, this is what we want to do, and this is how much, I have no idea...
See, that's where I hesitate, we can't put it on staff, it's our decision whether to do it or not.
Okay.
It's not for staff to say, we want to do an anti-hate event, you know, it's for us to say, yes, as a community, we're going to do this, mayor will be there, mayor will speak, we'll have this, that, or the other.
Okay.
Really needs to come from us, not staff.
Well, then, let's, that's what I want, I want us to do something that week, it doesn't have to be every day, it could be something small, it could be something, some little thing in the park.
Wait.
Okay.
I'll jump in here.
Okay, do it.
My fear is that time, it's Juneteenth, we have no time for it, I'm okay with the proclamation, I don't think you want to overload it, and take staff time, something else away that we're doing, we need time to do it, and do it right, rather than rush it, shut them down there, we're not ready for it, not prepared for it, and go to you with ideas, that's on us, as Steve said, but I'll do the proclamation part of it, Amy, and we can talk about it at the next meeting, and then we can make an announcement, wherever it's going to be, you want to show up, here you are, we'll do it that way, and it's, then we're done with it, and next year, when you want to schedule it in advance, do it 90 days in advance, give everybody time it's going to be there.
That's, I'm, that's all good, that all makes sense to me.
Every event doesn't have to be city-sponsored.
I don't hate those ideas.
That's good.
If I can offer this up, I may be giving up the booty, but, our next meeting is October 3rd, and that's still, you know, a good six weeks, five weeks before the event, and so, you know, we can put something very simple together after you meet at the next meeting, and give us direction, it may not be a huge event, but it's something we can do on a low, a small scale, and then again, like, Juneteenth planned for the future years, if we want to do something bigger.
Great.
So, you know, I don't like to say no to any of you, and we can do something here, but again, I'm being a little protective of staff time, because these things have a tendency to grow, and before you know it, it's a bigger event than...
Hundred percent.
I know that's not what you're asking for, but I just, I want to put the boundaries there.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, at this time, is there a second on this one?
No, you want to go with the proclamation idea and sit and stand?
Well, to what Bruce was saying, though, it's a little more...
Yeah, my fear is that we're trying to make something in a hurry to fit this, when a proclamation does exactly what your point is to make, if you want to do something and announce it, that's fine, but to jam staff time in here, do something quickly, my fear is that all of a sudden, they're pulling from somewhere else.
I'll second, you want to say?
Yeah.
You can second it.
And then if they come back and they say it's this, that, and the other, you can say poo poo.
Yeah, I'll give it to Joe.
Maybe not those exact words.
Or maybe, lock the plank.
You got it?
Thank you.
Okay. Whatever minimal thing you can do to make it not take a lot of time away, that's the point.
It will, will fit the time allotted, in terms of the effort that we can put forward.
Then we can discuss it when it comes back.
All good.
Okay.
All right, who else has something minimal to do going forward, anybody else? Then we'll go to city manager reporting.
Joe has something.
I was waiting.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, so, I'd like to request a future agenda item to bring up outdoor dining on walk streets, I've been told it would require a code amendment, and the Outdoor Dining Committee is looking at this issue, but I'd like to add this to a future agenda.
You got three of us, but okay, David Lesser, be a second.
No, actually, I have a question, if I could, for staff? May I ask a question before I decide whether I'm going to, you may already have your second vote, but I guess I, for the city manager, is it staff's preference to channel these sorts of questions through the task force first, so that staff can come to council with a package of proposals, or co-terminously pursue options like this, so that in fact, when the outdoor dining task force completes its work, in fact, they'll be the capacity to sort of implement some of their proposals? So, I'm going to ask Talina to come down.
It seems like a logical fit that this would be part of what.
Can we ask that in the opposite way, though?
Yes.
Which is, didn't we just talk about this? Didn't they already vote unanimously to propose use, as was said earlier tonight, of the, the walk streets, and we, at our last meeting, decided we didn't wanna do that?
That is correct. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. And we took what the council, the direction they gave us, the council gave us at the last meeting, and we heard that the council was not ready to approve it at that time, or to send us in that direction at that time, but that they were interested in hearing what the community, particularly the residents around the, the walk street commercial corners have to say about this, and then also, in the event that we do proceed with this, what types of regulations could we, could we develop that would protect the residents nearby? And so, we took that, and one of the, one of the questions we'll be posing to the community, both at our October 2nd community meeting, as well as the, with our presence at the Hometown Fair, will be particularly around this topic, to try to understand what the, how the residents are feeling about this, and to gain either, you know, community support or opposition, and then come back to the council, and the task force is already working on potential regulations, if this idea is supported at the end of the day, and when we come back to council, and when we're ready to come back with council, it'll be both with the community sentiment, as well as potential regulations.
Got it. So, it's already in process? So, did you hear that, her comments, Joe?
Yes. I'm not sure if that timeline applies to what I wanna be looking at. So, something sooner. Because how long is that process gonna be?
So, October 2nd is the community meeting for outdoor dining, which is when we are going to be able to engage the community, as well as the following week at Hometown Fair, and then we will have to wait until the next Outdoor Dining Task Force meeting, which is at the end of October, to be able to further develop our recommendations as it relates to regulations. After that, we will be able to return back to the council.
So, but I mean, the entire process, I mean, could, for the, for the outdoor dining to come up with a solution for, to be voted on by council, I'm just saying something.
You wanna explain?
I'm looking for something sooner in a particular area.
Well, it's not a really question for her, it's for us, so there has to be a second for that. I just have a comment here, Your Honor.
Yes.
I mean, as I push my button, but I guess, this is where I hear you, I, I think I can guess what this is about, but I always, at this point, hesitate to start taking things out of the basket that is downtown dining, so that we can consider everything together, because that's what we told the community we're going to do. I, I really hesitant to say, for this restaurant or that business, we're going to now take this out of the global consideration that we said we wanna make here. You know, unless there's some real compelling reason that I haven't heard, what is the compelling reason? Is it one particular business or one situation?
Well, it would, it would apply to, to all the walk street dining, but in terms of perhaps like hours of operation?
Well, my understanding is that, you know, if, if we're talking about Uncle Bill's, I'll throw the word out there, right, it's, it's an appeal, there is an encroachment permit that, and a use permit that dictates what their hours are. I don't think this necessarily addresses that, because they have an individual permit that they're operating under, is that correct?
That is correct.
It's not that they can't be out there like other businesses, it's that they are out there under certain constraints that are not, you know, necessarily conducive to what they want, but it's separate from this consideration as for walk street dining as a whole. It's, it's, they're dealing with their permit, they already have outdoor dining on the walk street. If that's the situation, it's different than that. They're already being looked at, right?
I mean, yes, I would advise the council that, that, given that this matter is going to be considered at an appeal hearing fairly soon, it would be, it would be best if these particular issues are not discussed until after that hearing.
Specific to that?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
I mean, we did talk, we talked about this at the meeting, the last meeting, right, and it's, and I, I think that I, I wanted to, I think what I was trying to do at that last meeting was try to find a way that, to give them direction for this very thing that you're asking. I support what you're asking, however, what I've learned from the director, we talked today, is his plan to go forward at the Hometown Fair and survey people and, and reach out and find out, and reach out to the walk street neighbors and get some more information on this, so that, one of the things that we're trying, I think that, one of the things that she has is an idea, is so that we can make it so that they don't have to get some sort of special encroachment permit and pay a lot of money, I think, if we make this decision within the general, within the plan.
Use permit.
Use permit, see, I did, I did this on our call today. So, right now, they could file for a conditional use permit, it would cost $8,000, and what we're trying to do is figure out ways that, oh, you fit this definition, okay. So, I would, I would have been in favor, but I wanna let her follow this process now that she's identified to get information, to find out if people are for this, to find out if it affects the walk street neighbors. Sorry if I didn't make sense in the beginning.
So, your advice is to stand pat until the hearing is over?
On that particular issue, yes, and then separately, on outdoor dining in general, again, I'll just remind the council that we have to take the whole package to the Coastal Commission, this is in the coastal zone, and an LCP amendment has to go forward in order for anything to happen, and they are expecting the full package.
Understood. Any questions for her? Are you good?
No, any other? Nope.
Anyone else says anything? I've got one, Bruce, but I'm not sure it's actually, direction can be given as opposed to a vote. The roadway, and I understand through Director Lee, all our cycle grant money and what we have to do as far as getting something paved, but the longer we wait on westbound MBB from PCH going towards the ocean, it is a bomb track, and I understand, we have to put it, we have to get a lot of stuff in the queue and a line to get the cycle grant money to pay through or through. So, while we're waiting, the road deteriorates. So, you know where the Wells Fargo branch is, and you go west from there?
Oh, MBB.
Going towards Oak and Elm, MBB, going westbound from PCH.
Off of Sepulveda.
Yeah, he calls, well, I call it PCH. So, westbound from there, as you go west, it's worse and worse, so my question, I'm not sure if it's a second or not. Can we get off the cycle grant period train and do our own money to fix that stretch, just that stretch, not repave the whole street, just that stretch where it's worse and worse every day? Is that direction, or is that vote?
City Attorney just mentioned it's a three-step process.
Yes, because that's gonna incur substantial costs, so you need a majority of council to give that direction.
So, do we get a second, a third?
I mean, I would, but I don't know how we could even do that. I guess it would be, come back with information as to what the cost would be, what the timeline would be, and, you know, what other funds are available.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Question?
Yes.
I'll be a second.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that, but aren't we also waiting from Director Lee to get information on sort of the intersection of Pacific and Manhattan Beach Boulevard, and so with that, whatever that answer ends up being, would that impact what you're talking about?
I hope, now they can speak, you want to, but this is so far away. One is way west, the bomb way east.
Okay, so Mayor, just, sorry to interrupt, and you do have a second on this.
Do I need a third, it'll be good?
No, no, we'll come back for the third.
Three-step process.
Thank you. All right, I'm good. Anybody else? All right. City Manager report, finally.
Yes, just briefly, I wanted to report that the conceptual Polywog Library Project that we've been talking about over the past several months, is, we're withdrawing that after some discussion with the school district, so there will be no plans going forward on creating a library, building one at Polywog. We will come back to the council in the coming weeks with a report to ask for direction on alternate locations, that we can go to the county and ask about building a library, which of course, was being proposed for archival and historical document purposes as well, and also how we would use the surplus funds that are available at the library right now. So, we'll have a broader discussion, probably in October, November, but just for the record right now, I just wanted to let everybody know that we won't be pursuing that, and we'll make sure that the community is aware of that.
Right, and since you brought that up, I think it's unfortunate, the council and people have called, and in fact, they talked to us today at the Peck Reservoir, saying that a resident, we all know, yet unnamed, a former city council member accused this council and the school board of having secret meetings behind everyone's back, not transparent.